The notice requirement provided for the open public meeting law has been satisfied. Notice was properly given, said notice having been transmitted to the Courier News on January 12th, 2022, as well as posting on the city's website. Mr. Clerk, please, can I have a roll call for this meeting?
Councilmembers Briggs Jones. Absent during roll call, Councilwoman Davis.
Present.
Councilman Hockaday.
Present.
Councilman McKenna. Can't hear you. Councilwoman McKenna?
Present, sorry, I had a little snap over there, thank you.
Councilwoman Mills Ransum.
Present.
Vice President McCray.
President.
And Council President Good.
Present.
We have six members present and a quill.
I may have a motion to approve the following minutes as presented, and that would be the combined session for June 13th, 2022, and the special meeting, June 30th, 2022. Motion to approve.
No move. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstaining, motion carries. Now we will have communications from the mayor. Mayor, you have the floor, sir.
Thank you, Council President. One of the things that we want to do this evening is to present a proclamation to Dr. Jackson in recognition of Americans with Disability Act. I don't have to tell you that disabilities are, you know, issues all across the United States and in Plainfield as well, and so we have to recognize that there are people who have challenges, and this act does precisely that, requiring us to do something that would accommodate people with disabilities. And so I am happy this evening to present this proclamation to Dr. Jackson, and she is, I believe she is with us virtually, and once the proclamation is presented, I would ask that she be given a courtesy to say a few words. At this time, I'll ask the council, the city clerk, Mr. Jalloh, to read the proclamation into the record. And after that, if Mrs. Jack, Dr. Jackson can be given the opportunity, I would appreciate that.
This is a proclamation from the office of the mayor in celebration of the American with Disabilities Act. Whereas on July 26th, 1990, President George H.W. Bush signed into law the Americans with Disabilities Act, ADA, to ensure the civil rights of people with disabilities. And whereas this legislation established a clear and comprehensive national mandate to eliminate discrimination against individuals with disabilities. Also, it expanded opportunities for Americans with disabilities by reducing barriers and changing perceptions. And whereas the city of Plainfield, on the anniversary of the Americans with Disabilities Act, celebrates and recognizes the progress that has been made by reaffirming the principles of equality and inclusion, and committing our efforts to reach full ADA compliance. Therefore, I, Adrian O'Matt, mayor of the city of Plainfield, do hereby proclaim and recognize, Monday, July 26th, 2022, as the 32nd anniversary of the Americans with Disabilities Act in the city of Plainfield, signed and sealed by the mayor of the city of Plainfield. Adrian O'Matt.
And Mr. President, if you can give the courtesy to Dr. Jackson to say a few words on this, the occasion of
Certainly.
recognizing Americans with disabilities.
Certainly, and on behalf of the governing body, Dr. Jackson, I say to you, congratulations. You have the floor.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Again, my name is Dr. Jackie Jackson, and Mayor Map would like to say I'm Caleb Porter's grandmother. So I had to introduce myself by that Caleb Porter couldn't be on a Zoom tonight because he went to karate. He wanted to be on a Zoom as well, but I just wanted to let you know I am his grandmother. So I'm introducing myself as being Caleb Porter's grandmother. And I'd just like to say good evening, everyone, Mayor Map and the council members on the call tonight. It is truly an honor and a pleasure to be here to have this ADA proclamation presented to me virtually on behalf of the disability community. Because this proclamation serves as a public recognition to celebrate this monumental legacy of the Americans with Disabilities Act, which was signed by, in law by, on June 26th, 1990, by President George H.W. Bush, as mentioned before. And on this July 26th, it will mark the 32nd anniversary of the ADA. And again, I thank you for recognizing and celebrating with me this important law that promotes equal opportunities for people with disabilities in all aspects of life. Personally, for me, this ADA proclamation is near and dear to me because I am a person with a physical disability, and I use a wheelchair on a daily basis. And certainly, I can truly, truly say on behalf of all people with disabilities and recognize the barriers that we face on a daily basis. And so also, please know that although this civil rights law has been implemented, it is not fully mandated, and I thank you for celebrating again with me to help make, keep this ADA proclamation active and so that it can be fully mandated, because a lot of progress has been made, but there's still a lot of work to be done. Therefore, I am asking mayors in surrounding towns also to place the ADA proclamation into their town hall and put it on their website and social media, Facebook, Twitter, LinkedIn, whatever your social media platform is, so that others can see and recognize this is important civil rights law, and certainly it should be recognized by the community. I have done a lot of work with mayors over the years and police officers over the years doing accessibility tours in the towns, and specifically in 2009 with Mayor Sharon Briggs. In Plainfield, you guys did a wonderful job doing an accessibility tour with me going around the town to make sure that Plainfield was accessible, and I give you an A plus. You guys are always doing a wonderful job in Plainfield, and I can't tell you how much I truly, truly appreciate this proclamation. Whatever you need me to do to help you with accessibility in the town of Plainfield, please don't hesitate to contact me, and hopefully one day I can meet you all in person. And again, I just truly, truly appreciate this opportunity for presenting this ADA proclamation to me on tonight.
Councilmembers, can we give a round of applause to Dr. Jackie Jackson? Again, say, congratulations, and we salute you on tonight. Thank you so much for joining us.
Thank you. It was a pleasure. Have a good night, everyone. Have another town, two more towns to go to tonight. Thank you.
Have a, have a good night. Be safe.
Good night.
We now move to consideration of public hearing, second reading, and final passage. Clerk, will you read MC 2022-26 by its title and further certify that the ordinance has complied with all statutory publication requirements, please?
Sure, MC 2022-26 is an ordinance of the city of Plainfield County of Union, New Jersey, adopting the Seventh Amendment to the 197 Scattered Sites Redevelopment Plan. It is hereby certified that the notice of the public hearing on this ordinance was published in the Courier News on June 17th, 2022.
The floor is now open to any member of the public who would like to speak on this particular ordinance. Tamara Wilson, good evening. Your name and address again for the record, please. You, you have to unmute yourself. There we go. Good evening, Ms. Wilson. She's connecting to the audio. We'll give her a minute. Okay, unmute again, Ms. Wilson.
Hi, yes, my name is Tamara Wilson. I live at 124 Lafayette Place.
Good evening.
Plainfield, New Jersey. Hi.
Hi.
Thank you for welcoming. I'm so happy to be on the call tonight. My neighbor Mark and James across the street was telling me about the council meeting. You know, so I'm here listening and trying to just get some, some answers to what's going on, on the, on the block. I have been in Plainfield since 2002.
Okay, Ms. Ms. Wilson, this particular time is for this particular ordinance that we are reading about, reading about now. If you'd like to come back later to make some comments, you're perfectly welcome to do so, but we thank you for joining us this evening. So we look forward to you hanging out with us. Is there any more? Anna, Quarter Reel, your name and address for the record, please. And we need you to unmute. There we go. Good evening.
Good evening. Anna Hoesse Quarterell.
Yes.
Is 1446 Maplewood Terrace in Plainfield, New Jersey.
Okay, and you have any questions about this particular ordinance at the time, at this time?
Um, I'm not sure what ordinance this is about because I logged out the meeting and came back in.
This is an ordinance of the city, of the county of Union, adopting the Seventh Amendment to the 197 Scattered Sites Redevelopment Plan.
No.
Okay, feel free to hang out for the rest of the meeting, and maybe you can, we'll have some questions later on. Thank you so much.
Council President, would you maybe just, just for the, the public, sometimes it's confusing to everybody, just outline how we do the comments for second read versus public, and then at the end?
Mr. Clerk, will you have that pleasure of doing that for everyone?
Sure. So there are three opportunities to talk during the meeting. If we have ordinances that are listed for second reading, there is a public participation, or a public hearing, rather, on each of the ordinances. So all of the ordinances that we're going through right now have been advertised for a public hearing, and you get to voice your opinion on those ordinances. We'll then move on to public comments, and the public comments right after this will be limited to strictly the resolutions and the ordinances that we're going to be discussing, or that the council will be considering this evening. After all of the business has concluded, after all the resolutions and the ordinances have been adopted, and we go to ordinances on first reading, and those are adopted or considered, rather, we then have general public comments, at which point in time the members of the public can voice their opinion of, about anything. That does not have to be on the agenda, but it's limited to three minutes with a total of an hour to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. So moving forward, Mr. Jenkins, this time is for this particular ordinance, MC 2022-26. If you can hear me, if you have, if you have comments about this particular one?
Yes, I do.
Go right ahead. Your name and address for the record, please.
Yes, my name is Andrew Jenkins. I live at 302 West H Street.
Good evening. Go right ahead.
Good evening. It's been brought to my attention that the city is planning to demolish one of the historic sites in my neighborhood and put up an apartment building. Am I correct about that? I just would like to know that I'm speaking about the right ordinance. Can somebody verify that what I'm speaking on right now is the correct thing, please?
Council President, the speaker is out of order.
Mr. Jenkins?
Yes.
It's about this particular ordinance and this particular ordinance.
I'm sorry, sir. I'm just trying to verify that I'm speaking about the correct ordinance and not something that is not.
Okay, that's not correct. No, we're not.
Okay.
Okay, you're welcome.
Sorry.
No, it's okay. Thank you. Any more for this particular ordinance? Please raise your hand. And unmute. Motion to close public hearing on, on this ordinance, please.
So moved.
Do I have a second? All in favor? We have a motion to adopt this ordinance on second reading and final passage, and if adopted, the ordinance shall be published as required by law.
Seconded.
Mr. Clerk, please, a roll call.
Councilmembers Briggs Jones.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Hockaday.
Yes.
McKenna.
Yes.
Mills Ransum.
Yes.
Vice President McCray.
Yes.
Council President Good.
Yes.
That is unanimous. This ordinance has been adopted on second reading and final passage.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk, can you proceed with MC 2022-27 by its title and further certify that the ordinance has complied with all statutory publication requirements, please?
MC 2022-27 is an ordinance to the city of Plainfield and the county of Union, authorizing an amendment to Plainfield City Code, Section 17, Colon 924A, Cannabis Related Businesses, Subsection B3, Distance Requirements, Paragraph A. It is hereby certified that the notice of the public hearing on this ordinance was published in the Courier News on June 17th, 2022.
Thank you. The floor is now open to any member of the public who would like to speak on this ordinance. Good evening, Ms. P. Waugh. Your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening, Council President and council members. Nancy P. Waugh, 1129 Myrtle Avenue. I just have a, a question about the rationale, rationale about why the 100-foot radius of residential zoning district is being taken out of the cannabis ordinance, and does that also have any impact on school zones? Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any more for this particular ordinance? Director Jackson, would you rather, would you like to answer that question?
The ordinance before you does not impact the school zones. The 150-foot requirement is being eliminated so that we can accommodate cannabis uses at places like the former Mullenberg location where they're building a medical facility. And again, even with removing this requirement, each cannabis operation has to come before city council, for city council to provide a resolution of support. So city council will be involved in every step as it relates to the approval of cannabis businesses in the city of Plainfield.
Thank you, Director Jackson. If there are no more questions concerning this particular ordinance, may I have a motion to close public hearing on this one?
So moved. Second.
We have a motion to adopt the ordinance on second reading and final passage, and if it's adopted, the ordinance shall be published as required by law.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Clerk?
Councilmembers Briggs Jones.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Hockaday.
Yes.
McKenna.
Yes.
Mills Ransum.
Yes.
Vice President McCray. Council President Good.
Yes.
That is unanimous. This ordinance has been adopted on second reading and final passage.
Clerk, please read MC 2022-28 by its title and further certify that the ordinance has complied with all statutory publication requirements.
MC 2022-28 is an ordinance to amend and supplement Chapter 16, Vehicles and Traffic, Article 7, Through Streets, Stop Intersections, Stop and Yield Intersections, Designating Certain Four-Way Stop Intersections. It is hereby certified. The notice of the public hearing on this ordinance was published in the Courier News on June 17th, 2022.
The floor is now open to any member of the public who would like to speak on this particular ordinance, MC 2022-28. If you'd like to speak, please raise your hand now and unmute yourself. Motion to close public, Mr. Romero.
It's Ms. Romero.
Ms. Romero, I do apologize.
That's okay. Just a quick question with regard to.
Can we, can we, can we have your name and address for the record? Thank you.
1216 Watchon Avenue. I'm just trying to give you back time. 1216 Watchon Avenue. I just had a question with regard to this. As we see more and more four-way stops and stop signs, does this include the markings on the road leading up to the stop signs? Because a lot of the times you, I've witnessed, you know, cars just go barreling through, and I think they're just not seeing it. It's not visible. They're distracted. So maybe if it's marked, you know, 50 feet back or so on and so forth. That's my question.
Thank you so much. Are there any more questions in regards to this particular ordinance? Motion to close on this ordinance?
Moved. Second.
May I have a motion to adopt this ordinance on second reading and final passage, and if adopted, the ordinance shall be published as required by law.
Removed.
Mr. Clerk?
Councilmembers Briggs Jones.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Hockaday.
Yes.
McKenna.
Yes.
Mills Ransum.
Yes.
Vice President McCray.
Yes.
Good. Yes, and before we move forward, Director Dabney, would you like to answer that question for Ms. Romero?
Absolutely. I'll be working with Director Dabney and Public Works, and we'll put some packages together to make sure that the, that the stop signs and the signage in regards to the roadway is put down. We'll, we'll make sure that the lettering and everything is put down in regards to these four-way stop signs, so that they have the appropriate markings on the ground for those intersections.
In addition to, Council President, if you don't mind.
Go right ahead, Director Dabney.
In addition to, we're sending agenda and I had a resolution for the red reflectors that will be on each stop sign before we stopped as well. The blinking reflector red lights.
Thank you. Thank you so much, both of you. Appreciate you.
Council President, can I ask a quick question on that?
Go right ahead, Councilman McKenna.
Is there a timeline for this? Because this would be the third council meeting where, where I've either heard people bring this up or I've asked about the circuit in particular, you know, the distance from the curb and that sort of thing. We, we've still got some four-way stop intersections that have this issue currently. So is it, do we have a timeframe on when we're going to address these, or we're just going to address them?
Abney or Dabney, which director's going to take that question?
We're going to address them accordingly. We're looking at everything now, assessing everything, councilmen. That's what we've been doing. And we're going to make sure the reflectors go up, and when we can, we're going to look to stripe and et cetera. Everything is from a safety standpoint. That was something I was going to make this for a while. So it's, we're looking to address them all.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Are you cool with that, Councilman McKenna?
No, because I was asking for a timeline, not just that they're going to do it. That's, this is like the fourth time, fourth month of practice. I mean, at some point, we gotta use that second mission that we.
You mean, you mean for its completion?
Just a timeframe on, we're going to get them reviewed and start taking care of it next week, and it'll all be done in three months and two days.
Apparently, you know, says, yes, we started assessing everything now, so we are looking into everything to address them. Looking at everything. We're going to do the reflectors once it's approved, the red reflectors on all stop signs. In addition to where we can put stop bars across the street, different various streets, we're looking at that too. In addition to crosswalks, that was part of the plan through the administrations.
Director Dabney, before you continue, if Mr. Louise is in your office, if he can just turn off the speakers to his computer, because that's where the feedback is coming from as you're talking, and it's making it a little hard to understand you sometimes.
Yes, we're taking care of it. Yes.
There's a, just a tad bit of a feedback from that. Okay, we're moving on. Clerk, please read MC 2022-29 by its title and further certify that the ordinance has complied with all statutory publication requirements.
MC 2022-29 is an ordinance to the city of Plainfield in the county of Union, state of New Jersey, to acquire by negotiated agreement or exercise of the power of eminent domain portions of real property for use as a public parking lot known and designated as a portion of the tax block 644 lot 601 in the official tax map of the city of Plainfield, Union County, New Jersey, located at 601-17 Watchon Avenue. It is hereby certified that the notice of the public hearing on this ordinance was published in the Courier News on June 17th, 2022.
The floor is now open to any member of the public who would like to speak on this particular ordinance. Dee Gibson, good evening. Your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening. My name is Lieutenant Dante Gibson.
Good evening.
From Plainfield Salvation Army, located on 615 Watchon Ave.
Good evening.
Thank you. So I want to thank you for opening up the opportunity for us to share on behalf of Plainfield Salvation Army. Over the past few years, we established with the city of growth and service, which I believe has been a major factor in Plainfield. And in reference to the spending ordinance, MC 2022-29, Block 644, over the past years, we have coordinated with the city on a few occasions in the past, I would say, year on several occasions with the city to negotiate a reasonable offer and accommodations for our gravel parking lot. We anticipate working towards an agreement and for us to offer additional resources for services along the lines of the One Plainfield One Future Initiative, which is ongoing. We are requesting a reasonable timeline for the Salvation Army to conduct an appraisal report within the policy of the organization, policy on our end, to reconsider this ordinance without the intent of eminent domain, and perhaps a reasonable negotiable offer or effort to build, foster a stronger partnership with the city of Plainfield and the Salvation Army. So we seek the support from the city in our endeavor to pursue a program study with the program, well, with the parking lot included, to continue our relations with the city, which we have been doing over the past, I would say, few decades. And we plan to continue to provide quality services in light of this ordinance and programs for those in our community with a joint effort with the use of the gravel lot.
Thank you, Mr. Gibson. We appreciate your comments. Is there anyone else that would like to make a comment on this particular ordinance? Motion to close public comment on this particular ordinance, please?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? We have a motion to adopt this ordinance. Well, public comment is, is closed for this ordinance. Before we move further, BA Levinson and the Corporation Council, would you like to respond to that comment? At this time, please, I wish you, both, both of you.
No, Council President, I, I, I'll handle this one myself. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Certainly. To, to Mr. Gibson, I will say that the, the city has been in negotiations for quite some time with the Salvation Army over this lot. And we will continue to negotiate in good faith to try to acquire this lot without the use of, of a condemnation action. However, we would be remiss as a city if we did not use all the tools in our toolbox to act in the best interests of the residents and the taxpayers. It's not just the action taken by council tonight does not, does not demand that we use eminent domain or condemnation action, merely authorizes the administration to do so if we are, if we hit an impasse in negotiations. So to Mr. Gibson, we will continue to negotiate. However, if we, if that negotiation does not bear fruit, understand that this is an avenue available to the city, and we will continue, we will pursue that avenue if we are unsuccessful in negotiations. So that, I, I, I've been tasked to speak on behalf of the city on this matter. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Mr. Manzello. That being said, may I have a motion to adopt this ordinance?
Before we make a motion, can I say something?
Councilwoman Davis?
Yes. So when we discussed this on first reading, the city said they've been working with the Salvation Army. We just had the lieutenant from the Salvation Army on here saying that they want to continue to work with the city. They want to get an appraisal. They want to get the appraisal for their own land. It's still very concerning that the city stance on this is, even if you get an appraisal, if you don't negotiate with us the way we want to negotiate, then we're going to use, which include taking. There's just something about that that just doesn't sit right with me for the city to say like, hey, we want this plan and we're going to take it because you don't want to negotiate with us. It's concerning. And I mean, for this council to give their board members a resolution of congratulations last month, and then to vote to allow the city to use eminent domain to take their land this month seems a little out of touch.
To President.
You know, if I get a joke, I'm sorry, mayors.
Yeah, I'd just like Mr. Manzello or Abby to present you with the facts.
That was my request originally.
Thank you. Well, Councilwoman, I think I have to start by saying, I think it would, it would only concern you depending on who you represent. And if you represent the residents and you represent the taxpayers, then I don't think you'd be as concerned as you are because we are tasked to make sure that we do not overpay for property when we acquire it. The city performs its own appraisal and we are guided by that appraisal. We are not guided by the appraisal of the seller of that property. So we are acting in the best interests of the taxpayers to make sure that when we acquire property, we acquire it for as little as possible. So that's why when you hear from the Salvation Army, they want us to pay more and pay what is above market value for that property. So when we, when we advocate here tonight, we advocate for the taxpayers. Secondly, this is a lot that has been underutilized for some time. We have been in negotiations with, with Salvation Army for many months, well over six months to try to resolve this. This, this is a legal means by which to move those negotiations, but we will not overpay because to do so would be, would be a violation of our fiduciary duty to the taxpayers of this city. And so when we, when we, so when we, as we move forward, we move forward to ensure that we do not overpay for this property and that we pay only fair market value. And so if we went to a condemnation action, we don't just take the property. We take the property and we pay fair market value for that property. We just want to make sure that we don't overpay and we do what is fair and we, and we pay what is fair. I hope that answers your question.
So I thank you for saying I represent, and I'm very clear that I represent the people of the city of Plainfield. And in representing them, I understand the work and the value of the work that the Salvation Army does for the taxpayers of this community. So multiple things could be true at the same time. And yes, we do have fiduciary opportunity responsibility to the taxpayers to use their money wisely. And I think it's a little questionable, always do that. One. Two, I think the Salvation Army adds value to this community and the work that they do. Three, you said that the lot was being underutilized, but underutilized by who's standards? By the city of Plainfield standards? Because we're looking to take that park, to take that lot and turn it into a parking lot for public parking. After we've gone through years of me sitting on this council and people saying that we don't have a parking problem. After having city employees saying, hey, we need more parking and not this BA but past BA saying, oh, there's no parking problem for employees, right? There's no parking problem here in the city of Plainfield. But let's be clear, I do understand who I represent. And so my next question is, are you suggesting that the Salvation Army is being unreputable in their presentation of how much they view that their land is being valued at?
No, I, I think what they're, what they're trying to do, Councilwoman, is that they want you not to vote for this ordinance tonight because they want to push their number, which will no doubtably be higher than the number that we have offered in our, in our appraisal. So this is not to say that, that the Salvation Army doesn't do wonderful work for the city. We're talking, we're, we're not discussing the value of of their work or as an entity. We're talking about the value of a piece of property that isn't being utilized by them at all. And in that negotiation, we have an appraisal. The city has ordered an appraisal. We have offered the full value of that appraisal to, to the sorry, we've offered that full value of that appraisal to the Salvation Army. In the event that they do not wish to accept that and they haven't said no to it yet, they just said they needed more time to review it. They haven't said no. They needed more time to review it. And even if they don't take that, we will basically ask a court to say, make a decision. We have an appraisal. We believe this is fair market value and let the courts decide. So we're not talking about the, about the value of Salvation Army for the city of Plainfield. Let that be the case. What we're saying is that we're, we're saying that the value of this piece of property is X. They're saying it's Y. Our job, everyone on this call, everyone on the Zoom call, is to advocate for the city of Plainfield's price. That's what we're doing.
Do we not think that appraisals are not objective? So if they get an appraisal, do we think that their appraisal is going to come back higher? Or shouldn't all appraisals be about the same?
No, I, my experience, appraisals can be very different. You know, there's, there's varying opinions. Different comps can be used, comparables can be used, comparable properties. Our job is, my job as a council and, and, and the administration, the mayor, BA Levinson, our job is to advocate to make sure that we get the best deal possible for the, for the taxpayers of this city. And that's all we're trying to do here.
Mr. Mincello, thank you so much. Thank you.
All the Salvation Army is asking for is for a little bit more time to get their own appraisal. So is there a reason why we're rushing to get this ordinance fast?
Because it's been a little over, a little over six months. I mean, all closer to nine.
Mr. Mincello, thank you so much. And as before we go to a vote, the mayor would like to.
All I would like to say at this time is that we are not rushing anything. We've gone through this process from months over months over months. And there is no need for you to, you, the governing body to, you know, acquiesce to what the Salvation Army's asked you to do, that is to delay this process. So we're asking for your support and to adopt this ordinance on second reading.
With that being said, may I have a motion to adopt this ordinance on second reading and final passage? And if adopted, the ordinance shall be published as required by law.
Moved.
Clerk, may I have a roll call, please?
Council members, Rich Jones.
Yes.
Councilwoman Davis.
No.
Councilman Hockaday.
Yes.
Councilwoman McKenna.
No.
Councilwoman Mills Ranson.
Yes.
Vice President McCray. Council President Good.
Yes.
Five in favor, two opposed. Ordinance has been adopted on second reading and final passage.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. We now move to public comments limited to resolutions and motions and ordinances to be introduced on first reading. A total of thirty, thirty minutes has been allocated to public comments limited to resolutions and ordinances being considered on this evening. If you wish to be heard, please hit the hand icon to be recognized and you will be unmuted. Once you have been unmuted, please give your name and address for the record. Each speaker again will be given three minutes. The floor is now open. Mr. Rich Sudol, good evening. Your name and address for the record.
Rich Sudol, 313 Franklin Place, Plainfield, New Jersey.
Good evening.
Good evening, Council, Directors and Mayor Map. My name is Rich Sudol and I lived in my historic district home, historic home since 2009, which is located in the Crescent Historic District. I'm a strong advocate of historic preservation and an active member of the community volunteering for various causes throughout the city. As a degreed engineer, I have served four years on the zoning board of adjustment for the city of Plainfield, having been appointed by Mayor Map. As a volunteer, I take my time and my role seriously and I've learned a lot with my time on the zoning board, helping me to make the, the city a better place. So tonight I'm here to speak about ordinance MC 2022-35, which is amending and supplementing the municipal code on historic preservation commission and historic preservation controls. I believe that these amendments that are proposed appear to be a violation of municipal land use law, NJSA which states that the issuance of permits, aka certificate of appropriateness pertaining to historic sites are referred to the Historic Preservation Commission. By creating these ordinances in MC 2022-35 and selectively removing that authority from the Historic Preservation Commission to issue a permit or a certificate of appropriateness for any property in a historic district or individually nominated, I feel this is violating the municipal land use law that was specifically enacted to ensure that our Historic Preservation Commission has jurisdiction over those historic properties. Plainfield has a rich and storied history and one of the top historic preservations in, in New Jersey for the past thirty-five years. Our HPC is a model on historic preservation. Other municipalities follow and look towards. The city prides itself on a historic past. We boast of our historic districts. There's numerous articles about our historic districts. And yet, why are we attempting to take away power from a commission that has done so much good over the past thirty-five years just to push through some development projects? Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mrs. Sudol. We appreciate your comment. Have a good night. Ms. Cordarrelle, again, your name and address for the record.
Anna Lisa Cordarrelle, 1446 Maplewood Terrace in Plainfield, New Jersey.
Yes, good evening again.
Good evening. I'm, I'm not sure if I'm at the right meeting or if I'm going to make the right question at the right place, but for some reason, somebody at the city hall sent me to this meeting today. The reason why was because I, I spoke to one of them. I'm not sure what office it was, but it was for a complaint. I explained to them that every time we have something going on here, I always get the police call for the music, even if it's slow. So they told me to get into the meeting to see what was able to be done.
And Ms. Cordarrelle, we could, if you would like to hang around for the rest of the meeting, you can until we have our, our additional public comments toward the end of the meeting and someone will be more than happy to answer your question. Okay?
Okay.
Thank you so much. Appreciate your patience. Ms. Frederick, good evening. Your name and address for the record, please. You're unmute. You're still unmute. You have to unmute yourself.
I did.
There we go. Now we can hear, now we can hear you. Good evening. Your name and address for the record.
All right. I'm Margaret Frederick. I live at 1441 Prospect Avenue.
Good evening.
I've been a lifelong resident for fifty years in this city. And it has been to my horror that many of the land that has been bought up or utilized by developers, that it is just rental property and not for condos or people that would stay in this community. And if you take this lot from the Salvation Army and you say you're going to build a parking lot, I have a feeling that more than just the parking lot is going to be built on this land. And that's my concern.
Thank you, Ms. Frederick. We appreciate your comment. Members of the administration, I, I, I hope it's careful for me to assume that you're listening to what they're saying and that you will answer, to respond to some of the questions later on. Thank you. Mr. Michelson, good evening. Your name and address for the record.
Thank you, Mr. President. William Michelson, 556 Belvedere Avenue.
Good evening.
Chairman of the Plainfield Historic Preservation Commission. And I was a bit mortified to see this proposal when it came out from the city clerk, thirty-four and thirty-five on your docket. I just want to explain and hopefully demystify a couple of issues. First of all, the informational meetings that we give, I can't imagine why anybody would want to eliminate those. It's just something where property owners or professionals can come before the HPC, ask some basic questions. Can I put up vinyl siding? Can I put up solar panels? This, that and the other thing. And they get the answers they need with no fee, no need to give formal notice to anybody. And it may actually even comply for administrative approval through our architectural review committee at that point. I don't know why this was picked as a function to eliminate. Number two, this is the one that I think caused most of the problems. Cases that are before us, but they are also before either the planning and zoning board. This is basically statutory. You can't change it. We do referrals from the other boards. Sometimes those applicants come to us first. It may be that we need to straighten out a procedure or a couple of simple ways of putting people in the right sequence of where should they go first, but to just cut us out of it. It's a violation of the statute. Number three, buying the old YMCA. I don't know quite what happened over there. They came before us for an informational. We gave them a lot of valuable feedback. They came before us three months later with their actual proposal and we were very happy with it. And then they finished it up a couple of months after that. We approved it. And in fact, it was an enormous hit, I think, with both us and the public. So I think what the HPC has to contribute to this process is much, much larger than whatever negatives there are, whatever inefficiency there may be from doing it this way. Another item I saw in this proposal, it says that actions should require full commission approval on referrals from the other boards. Well, we've already, we've always done that, so I don't know what the problem is. We do, however, have this architectural review committee and I think this raised some controversy. It's a method that we use to approve like for like, you know, somebody ripping off their old roof and a plant, replacing it with something that may be identical or that may even be better. And anything that's fairly minor, somebody wants to repave their driveway. Well, we take a look at it. The reason it's good, as soon as it comes into the planning office, we make a quick determination, is this an ARC matter? In other words, is it relatively minor? That it shouldn't require a formal hearing and it shouldn't require people to wait for monthly meetings and give notice to their neighbors. I think it's worked like a charm. I think it's very popular. And so I don't get it. Why would anyone want to change this?
Council President, the speaker's time is up.
Mr. Michelson, thank you so much, sir, for joining us this evening and we appreciate your comments. Ms. Johnson, good evening. Your name and address for the record, please.
Jennifer Johnson, 816 Third Place, Plainfield, New Jersey.
Good evening.
Good evening. I called in because I'm very concerned about the resolution or the ordinance to do away with the HPC approval of spot zoning and circumventing the HPC in order to attain properties, to develop them. The one thing Plainfield has going for them is their historic districts. We have nothing else. We don't have supermarkets. We don't have restaurants that we can sit down and eat in. And the one thing that's attracting new residents to our city is you're trying to vote out. And I think it would be a horrible thing to do for our city. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Ms. Heim, good evening. Your name and address for the record, please.
Elizabeth Heim, 830 Belvedere Avenue. Also responding to MC 2022-35 for the Historic Preservation Committee.
Yes.
Commission. I've been a resident for twenty-seven years and it was the historic district and the historic areas that brought me here from Newark. And I think getting rid of the commission, which is our gatekeeper to make sure that the areas, areas stay the way they are. I think it's going to hurt the long-term viability of these historic areas. And I think in the end that lowers our property values, which of course, obviously, that's a personal thing. But in the long term, that affects the tax collection. If we hollow out these areas, there will be less taxes paid and less functioning for Plainfield. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Heim. Appreciate your comments. Have a good evening. Andrew Jenkins, your name and address for the record, please. Good evening.
Yes, good evening again. My name is Andrew Jenkins. I live at 302 West Sage Street. My comment is, guys on the council and ladies on the council, I know you probably have lived here longer than me. This is your home. I moved here, like the other lady that just spoke, because of this historic district. I come from the city. I, I drive around and I love what I see, the Victorian homes and all the other styles of homes, the, the variation of the properties here. When you start tearing that down, you, you're going to take away from Plainfield. You're going to take the beauty. you're gonna take away from Plainfield. You're gonna take the beauty away for profit, which is not right. I'm pretty sure you guys can figure out, I'm pretty sure you guys can figure out a way to keep the, the beautiful structures that are here in this town without really just, you know, destroying it. You know, all the overdevelopment, you know, I'm hearing that, I'm seeing properties going up, but like the lady said, I don't see big business coming here, you know. I do see people putting up buildings and wanting to make money and, and, you know, because of the rentals that they're gonna be getting. But, you know, like, can I, can I party here? You know, I can't. I have to go to another town. Can I sit down at a big restaurant? No, I can't. But also, you know, the HSBC, that the HPC, yeah, it may be like a headache to someone in the beginning, but I understand now the value of having the HPC. You know, because you're keeping somebody like myself who's new to the area or, or who doesn't understand what's going on. And I wanna fix my home or, or build it up, but yeah, preserve your property by using the newer-like material. I didn't, you know, I didn't understand it in the beginning, but I do understand it now, and I do understand the value of having the HPC, but taking away, taking away their authority or not even authority, but their ability to just educate a new person on how to do their, their, their home, I think is wrong. I think that you guys, please, I'm asking you, I'm asking all of you, really, you know, especially you guys that are, I'm gonna say lifers, that's been living here. I'm pretty sure you, you do still admire the beauty that's here, and to, like I said again, to take away another power or whatever it is, just for, I'm gonna say for profit, I think is wrong. So thank you for your time and hearing me out.
You're on mute. You're on mute, Council President.
I apologize. If you're waiting to ask a question and you've already asked a question or made a comment, we ask that you give those that have not a chance to do so. And if you'd like to speak toward the end of the meeting, you may, you may do so.
This is on, on a separate ordinance.
No, 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 I'm not talking to you, Ms. Pwar. You were, you were at the beginning.
Okay.
I'm talking about this particular section for those who have already made a comment. If, if, if you're, if you're waiting to be heard, again, we ask that you hang up and if you want to make a comment later on in the meeting, you may perfectly well do so. But this, we like to give everyone a chance within the thirty minutes to make their comments. Ms. Pwar?
Okay, thank you. Thank you, honorable city council members and honorable mayor, map and administration and directors. Good evening. There are Nancy Pwar, eleven twenty-nine Myrtle Avenue, as the gentleman said before about a lifer, I'm a lifer. There are many issues on tonight's agenda that concern me as a lifer of Plainfield. I am speaking only on behalf of my family and in no other capacity. In that regard, MC two twenty-two dash thirty-five amendments to Historic Preservation Commission are of great concern. I'm not sure of the reasoning behind those amendments. However, history is an integral part of Plainfield's existence, both good and bad. History is an amenity that a price cannot be paid for, and it is a cultural heritage tourism draw. To do these amendments to Historic Preservation Commission is, in my opinion, not in the best interest of the city as a whole, especially when it could impact the certified local government designation that the city received back on December twenty-fourth, nineteen eighty-six, as per the National Park Service Department of Interior federal website. Plainfield is one of forty-eight such designated certified local governments in New Jersey, which is eight point five percent of the total of five hundred and sixty-four municipalities in the state. New York has seventy-five, Pennsylvania has forty-nine. Plainfield is one of two thousand ninety such designated certified local governments in the United States. According to the National Park Service website, Plainfield was the fourth municipality to be so designated behind Haddon Heights, Lawrenceville, and Camden. It is a prestigious designation and worthy of protection. Why is this designation important? It gives the city and nonprofit organizations in the city the ability to apply for grant funding for historic preservation, because we have a commission in place which fits the criteria of the state and the National Park Service Department of Interior. It is one of the questions on many grant applications that nonprofits have to apply for, and gives added points to the city and those nonprofits. The city has received funding from the New Jersey Historic Trust, the Firehouse, number four, received twenty-six thousand two hundred and fifty dollars in two thousand and seventeen. City Hall received two hundred and sixty-five thousand and twenty-five dollars in two thousand and four. Three hundred and six thousand five hundred and fifty dollars in nineteen ninety-three. The Drake House has received fourteen thousand twenty-five dollars in two thousand and twenty-one. One hundred and seventy-seven thousand nine hundred and eighty-five dollars in two thousand and twenty-six, and one hundred and ninety-nine thousand eight hundred and ninety-three dollars in two thousand and four. First, some planes will receive funding for their buildings prior to the recent New Jersey Supreme Court ruling, which no longer allows such funding. First Unitarian Church received four hundred and forty-six thousand three hundred and sixty-nine dollars in two thousand and eight, and forty-one thousand thirty-three dollars in two thousand and six. And now that it is the Plainfield Performing Arts Center, it would be eligible for additional funding, because it's no longer a church. My concern with the amendments to Historic Preservation Commission ordinance causes me pause, because what is the economic value added or the economic ramifications to the city and nonprofits, who in many cases voluntarily taking care of historic buildings and structures in Plainfield? What impact would this ordinance have on the ability to receive funding? Would it eliminate funding opportunities and/or would it put the city and nonprofits on a lower position for funding? Will this ordinance require the state in New Jersey to decertify the city? And with its impact, other types of grants that the city receives that may require certified local government status?
Mr. President, the speaker's time is up.
Ms. Pwar, we always appreciate your comments, and you always come with outstanding presentation and numbers and stats, and we appreciate that. If you'd like to come back later, feel free to do so. Someone with the initial of F. Good evening. Your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening. This is Francie Moore, nine seven five Barwin Avenue, Plainfield.
Hi.
Hi, everybody. I'm just making a comment in regards to the Historic Preservation Commission. I am originally from New Jersey, so basically it used to be, it used to be a beautiful town, and anymore it's overdeveloped. And I left because my traffic time and everything was ridiculous. I moved here in twenty fourteen, thinking that I will have less of the issues that I was having there. And I'm very disappointed, because, yeah, you, the overdevelopment in this town right now is over. It's just ridiculous. As far as the Historic Preservation Commission, that's one of the, the historical homes is one of the things that drew me to this place. It's beautiful. It gives a wide range of different things. History, it's very important to preserve this. I mean, the fact that you guys are willing to take this away, then that means that anybody could just come in the historical side of you guys get rid of this, and they can do whatever they want. Example, of course, a street from my home. Investors bought the house, and they basically went in there, beautiful home. It's, you could tell it's, you know, it's antique. They went in there, they put all these cheap materials in there, and the house looks nothing. It does not match the block at all. It just looks like it's, they put cheap material in there, and now it's up for sale or whatever, but the house doesn't look, it doesn't aesthetically, it doesn't fit with the rest of the neighborhood. So those are just, that's just one example of the many things that could happen if you guys get rid of the Historical Preservation Commission, because they're the gatekeepers to make sure that the integrity of these homes are kept and that it continues to look as beautiful as it is. So I'm hoping that you guys are taking into consideration everything that everyone's saying and not continue to do the strata school that you normally do, where you guys are pretending like you're listening to us, but then completely ignore our cry, what we're asking and what we're requesting. We pay taxes in this city, and I think that things need to be taken into consideration and not over, you know, past what you, you guys just don't care. You just very arrogantly just pass all these things down, and it's basically like, deal with it, and it's just, it's not right. So I'm thankful that you guys are in your positions, but I am hopeful that some, somehow you guys will come to a conclusion where some of this, you know, economic just overdevelopment and getting rid of all these things is just gonna, just, it just needs to be done better. It's tearing up this whole entire town. I watched it. Just basically, it's, it's just looking, it's not even a town anymore. It's not suburban. It's just, it's starting to look like a city, like where there's over amounts of cars. My, my commute has increased, so I have to leave at least forty-five minutes earlier to make it to work because of the amount of traffic, and we're not even gonna get on the streets. You guys need to do a good job of like really repairing these streets. The potholes are ridiculous. It just, it just needs to be done better. Thank you so much for your time, and everybody have a great night. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Have a good night.
Council President, I'd just like to note, we have ten minutes remaining for public comments on resolutions.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Ms. Danny, how about we just say Ms. Danny? Your name and address for the record. I don't want to put your name.
That works for me. This is Dan Passperzak at seventeen twenty-four LaChung Avenue. I just want to resonate, and excuse me, good evening to everyone. Thank you for having me at council meetings. I am a new resident. My husband and I moved here in late December of twenty twenty. And again, like most others, the reason why we moved here is because of the fantastic real estate and historic homes and districts that are in this area. And I have to say that it is a blow to the heart to think that something that, as integral as the HPC, could be robbed of its only power to help preserve and restore the homes in this area. I'm much like everybody that lives here. I love this area. I don't even live in a historic district. I live next to one. And I see people all the time riding bikes and, and walking through these areas, and it really is a, an asset to this city. I do realize that the city also needs quite a bit of development and beautification, but I don't think that taking away the HPC's integral role in making sure that what they do is continually preserved, I just don't think that that is the right way to go. I, I can't help but feel that this is some power grab or a knee-jerk reaction to the preservation of Grace Church. But I have to tell you that there are a lot of people out here that see it and believe it, and I'm sure there are many other people on this call right now that want to have the same conversation that I'm having. To just tell you how important it is for us to retain the HPC and for the HPC to retain that power for them to be able to, and I don't want to say power, but influence to make sure that this town and our districts are, are taken care of. I'm, I have no facts to bring you. I cannot speak as eloquently as Ms. Pwar and others that have lived here for decades, but I'm trying to appeal to your morality, and please do not take away something that is so very important to this city just because an administration is pushing you in that direction or maybe in your pockets. Your conscience has to live on your shoulders, and if we lose these very vital, important places or anything, anything that pertains to the historic districts, once it's gone, it's gone, and you can't get it back. That's all I have to say, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Danny. We appreciate your comments. Have a great evening. Karen Flanagan, your name and address for the record, please.
Karen Flanagan, three oh five West Seventh Street in Plainfield.
Good evening.
Good evening. I have a question about where we stand with resolution. Make sure you get the right number here. Two five oh dash twenty-two. And this specific A, the West Seventh Street and Park Avenue, which is part of the pack and the two apartment buildings next to it and the Park Hotel, and that, and the gentleman's home next to the Park Hotel. My question is, I saw the printout. I saw the, the program that was developed, and I've looked at it, and I was wondering what the next steps are here and where it stands after this.
Okay. Okay, that, that's the question you have?
That's, that's my question.
Okay, we will get to your question as soon as we can. Okay? Thank you, Ms. Flanagan. Thank you for your question. Mr. Petrozino, John, your name and address for the record, please. You're on mute.
Hi, my name is John Petrozino. I live at ten fifty-five Sleepy Hollow Lane.
Good evening.
Good evening. Good evening, Council President. Good evening, directors and council people. Thank you for having this meeting. I'm commenting in concern to MC twenty twenty-two dash thirty-four, purchasing of the YMCA building. Excuse me. And I'm just wondering how it is that the building, excuse me, which originally sold in twenty eighteen. Sorry, excuse me.
You okay?
Something went down the wrong pipe, sorry.
Okay.
How the buildings that sold for one point five million in twenty eighteen in the city now wants to acquire for over five billion dollars? And why the city feels that that amount is justified in purchasing this building?
Okay. Are you finished, right?
Five million dollar, the building, the city, and what, what, what does the city intend to do with the building now that it has seen fallen through with the developer?
Okay. Thank you so much, Mr. Petrozino. We appreciate your comment and your question. Mary Berwinkle, good evening. Your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, everyone. Mary Berwinkle, seventeen eighty-five Sleepy Hollow Lane. I am a forty-year resident of Plainfield. I wish to express my strong opposition to MC two oh two two dash three five. Plainfield is a city with a rich history that has protect, that is protected with ten historic zone districts. The Plainfield Land Use Law makes clear that the purpose of historic zone districts is to recognize and preserve the unique architectural and neighborhood elements present within specific designated historic areas and to support the preservation of historic structures and design features and densities consistent with historic patterns and development. That is the public policy law and spirit that we ought to be complying with. This brazen attempt by the administration to amend the Historic Preservation Commission controls out of existence and allow the city to do anything it wants in historic districts is not consistent with this public policy, our city's brand, or our city's values. I imagine this is happening because a developer feels inconvenienced by the need to appear before HPC. Let us stop the train of this frantic development and value residents more than developers. I implore the city council members to not rubber stamp this and vote no on MC two oh two two dash three five. Thank you.
Thank you. Mary Berwinkle, we appreciate your comment. Gary S. Good evening. Your name and address for the record, please.
Yes, good evening. My name is Gary Schneider. Address eight two five Carlton Avenue. I've lived here since two thousand and two. I've been a lifelong residence of New Jersey and many different cities, at least over twenty cities in my lifetime so far. Being a resident and being involved in, in politics on and off and many different things, I recognize a shell game when I see one. The attempt to dismember the HPC is purely, in my view, a shell game for other things that's going on, like buying the YMCA and working with other developers. And the purchase of, if the city does plan on bailing out, which is probably the correct term, bailing out the developer because they ran out of money, I say thank God that we've realized they ran out of money before they started actually building it, and we have a building that's laying there for decades. I'm also on the HPC for the last nine-plus years. And the, the shame of it is that when the developer came in front of the, the board, the first time for the YMCA, it was one described a sea of brick wall that was going up on it. And they worked with us to come up with a beautiful architect plan that would have been acceptable to the whole city about it. All right. Now, for the purpose of buying them out or bailing them out, I have no idea why any city, unless there was alternative motives, to bail out a developer on, on that thing. Second part on it is that I'm also in real estate. And in the stroke, I did a study about six years ago, seven years ago. In historical districts. Homes in the districts are anywhere from fifteen to twenty two percent higher in value than outside of the district. If you start dismembering the board. And allowing anybody to do anything to any house or build any house in that. The value is gonna go straight down. So now you're gonna be taking money directly out of my pocket. Um and by allowing this to go through. If that happens. I will make it a personal effort. To find out everything possible and what's going on um with the YMCA and other areas on it. It it it's. The city is being pushed. Into a decision. That shouldn't be put into. Your citizens. That you have been elected from, your fiduciary right. Is to protect the citizens and not to protect the mayor or the developer or anybody else. And if you allow this to go on and you. Devalue the values of the properties that's in historical districts. It's going to be horrendous. You're gonna start seeing people selling homes, moving out and moving into different districts on it. I've seen this pattern before.
Council President, the Speaker's time is up and we have uh. Exceeded time for public comments and just to remind everybody, there is a portion at the end of the meeting for general public comments.
Also President, I I make a motion to extend public comment. We've got eleven people with their handle and there's another ninety five people that are. logged in, so I think it's certainly within our ability to uh allow people to speak for a little longer or kill anyone else.
And Councilman McKenna, we will do that at the end of the meeting.
No, I'm actually maybe just making a motion to extend this public comment twenty minutes.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any abstaining? Any? No? We'll take a roll call. Mr. Clerk. We'll take a roll call on this motion.
So a roll call on the motion to extend public comments. Council members. Um Briggs Jones.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Hockaday.
Yes, is there is there a certain time now? Will we just extend it?
Twenty minutes.
No, it will be uh uh we prefer to do it at the end of the meeting where where they have more time.
Council President, I made a motion to extend this period for twenty minutes and that's what you would just ask for a roll call.
So yes, we did. So yes, we did, but but.
And we're in the middle of a roll call though.
Councilman McKenna? Finish the roll call. Uh yeah, thank you, uh Council.
Councilman McKenna.
Twenty minutes, yes.
Yes, I mean, yes.
Councilwoman Nelson.
Yes.
Vice President McCray.
I call for a point of order. The motion was amended without properly being amended.
Who amended the order?
You did. You said twenty minutes when you.
Twenty minutes at the beginning.
Originally, you said extend the uh period. Then after council, no, after Councilman. Um Hockaday asked how long, you said twenty minutes.
Ca- Council, Council President and Council Vice President's point of order is correct. The vote has now changed.
I move we extend this public comment session for twenty more minutes.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Any oppose? Any abstaining? Motion carries. Or we need a vote, don't we? Uh, Mr. Clerk?
No, I didn't hear any. Yeah. And then that the the motion passes.
Public comment continues. Mister Frazier. Good evening. Your name and address for the record.
Yes, good evening. Uh my name is Ian Fraser and I live at seven forty seven Dixie Lane and I would like to comment on MC twenty twenty two dash thirty five. Um specifically, I'd like to um highlight part seventeen ten dash four sta- uh actions requiring certificate of appropriateness. Um and the addition states. That no certificate of appropriateness shall be required with respect to any project that is subject of an application to the planning board or the Board of Adjustment. Instead, the HPC shall make recommendations to the planning board or the Board of Adjustment. Um this addition to the ordinance clearly removes all power to issue cer- uh certificates of appropriateness. Away from the HPC for development projects regardless of their impact on historic buildings, places or structures. What ultimate impact will there be on the future of the unique character of Plainfield? Does this mean that as a resident in a historic home? I must submit to HPC oversight. But if I were an outside developer who bought a historic property, then I would be immune to the standards and oversight of the HPC. What if some future developer wants to raise a segment of Van Wyk Brooks Hillside or Crescent Avenue? Will the power of outside developers overcome the interests of Plainfield's residents? Additionally, there are numerous revisions that exclude the city council from sections of this ordinance. I hope that this council realizes that by voting yes, they will be voting away their powers to influence the outcome of matters pertaining to HPC. Unless they're also members of the Economic Development Committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Mister Frazier. Good evening. Mister Shaw, your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, my name is Andrew Shaw. I live at thirteen forty one Prospect F. And of course, my concern is along with everyone else's. Um the item number thirty five, twenty two, twenty twenty two thirty five. And the um removal of the gatekeeping function of the HPC from uh further uh. Developments here in uh here in Plainfield. It should be obvious to all. That one of the things that is uh unique about Plainfield is what we might call is legacy housing stock. This is not something you're gonna find anywhere else. It's not something we found anywhere else. And so we came to Plainfield in order to participate in it. Um. The notion, uh I think, as the Corporate Counsel uh advised um. Uh Councilwoman Davis. That uh you on the council are responsible to the taxpayers and residents of the city. Is, I think, um a good thing to keep in mind. As a taxpayer and resident of the city. I think that uh it would be folly of the highest order. For the council to vote away the protections that the HPC was established. To provide. So thank you for listening.
Thank you, Mister Shaw. Have a good night. Mister Wyatt, good evening. Your name and address for the record, please. You're on mute. There we go. Good evening.
Yes, Richard Wyatt, ten thirty eight Central Avenue.
Good evening.
Good evening. I would like to speak on MC. Twenty twenty two dash thirty five. And uh once again, I spoke about this last week, transparency, which is open, honest and accessible communication. Uh that essentially has three purposes: to provide information to the public, increase participation, to hold organizations accountable. We are asking that you demand an explanation and engage in civil discourse with those that are opposed to passing this. So we, as your constituents, can get a better standing. The HPC is a body that has been vital to our city. Why strip their power? You are not lobbyists for developers. You represent the people here in Plainfield. And as you can see, they are on this meeting speaking tonight. Please do not do as usual and just ignore them. Accountability to the residents on the call, this one is for us. Some members of our governing body bank on you having short term memories. They ignore you until they are asking for your vote. So we will make sure that we are keeping the data and writing down every time that they ignore us. So when it's their time to run, we will respond then. And also on twenty twenty two dash thirty four, uh the purchase of the YMCA. Is this for a community center or excellent center? And um why are we buying this now in a five point one million? We the city could have purchased it earlier uh for less money. So those are my questions and comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Mister Wyatt. Have a good evening. Ms. Cooper, your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening. Sam Zekitha Cooper, Post Office Box two nine one seven Plainfield, New Jersey. Simply want to speak on the. Ordinance looks like it ends in. Of course, I lost it. It's the one that pertains to the purchase of the traffic calming devices. And stop signs. Uh I just want to know if the school systems have been thought about. In that purchase, meaning there are several schools. We have two to three high schools. We have elementary students that are traveling to and from. Um I have always wanted blinking lights that indicate that there is a school. In the area like when you're driving on Park Avenue, when you're on Rock Avenue, West Front Street. Wherever. I just wanted to know. If in this purchase. There was something accountable for the schools and if not. Can we put something of consideration with these new projects? That we keep doing tax abatements for or pilot programs? Can we somehow filter and work towards? This same process with the lighting to assist the areas where schools are present? That's all I have for this ordinance.
Thank you for your comment. Mister Monroe, your name and address for the record, please.
Uh Brian Monroe, three one three Franklin Place. Uh thank you.
Good evening.
You counsel for allowing me to speak in a good evening. Um my concern is the uh the resolution regarding taking uh power away from the HPC. And putting it in the hands of the planning board. Uh my concern with that is that. Uh like we've had with these empty lots, we could spot zone it, which would then therefore go before the uh planning board and they could approve it. Taking the HPC um out of the loop and ultimately allowing them to build whatever they wanted to. Uh that also that could hinder other properties in this town if we'd allow that to keep going. Um developers would see that as a viable solution. They'd start be they'd be buying up some of these bigger mansions and larger properties and. Asking for it to go under a redevelopment program just to appease them and. That's that's what really gets me nervous about this is that you would be taking a a huge power away from the HPC. To prevent um that sort of demolition just to appease a developer as we have seen. Going in the city. Uh my other my other concern is the five million dollar purchase. And Ms. Jackson had spoke at a recent meeting saying that the city didn't have the funds to purchase um Grace's church. For five million dollars. So where all of a sudden are we coming up with five million dollars? To purchase the YMCA and why are we purchasing the YMCA? Uh thank you.
Thank you, Mister Monroe. David Buckman, good evening, sir. Your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name is David Buckman. I live at one one two seven Watchung Avenue. I uh and mayor and council president, council members and all others, as a proud and fairly new pr- uh Plainfield resident. I'm thrilled with the history and architectural. Features and character of much of the city like many of the others have said here. I have no doubt that the Plainfield Historic Preservation Committee Commission. Has helped to revitalize districts and strengthen neighborhoods and communities in such a constructive manner. For about forty years. And that the commission is responsible for increasing the awareness and growth of Plainfield. And positively impacting and stabilizing property values. I'm also an architect and with my business here in town. Uh my opinion may upset some of my developer clients who want money making projects and large. Large buildings and this may be a disadvantage to my business. However, I voice it because I strongly believe in doing the right thing and not the easy thing. And in making decisions for the better of the community and not individual companies. Besides the obvious, the Plainfield HPC has provided a manner of checks and balances for our built environment. And it delivers so much that cannot be replaced. I hope that uh the your commission, your uh. The council will take all that at this into consideration, not just make the easy decision. Uh ending or decreasing the role of our historic commission will begin the removal of much of the good that has been done here in Plainfield. For the last few decades and keeping development within reason and significant. I hate to think of what might happen to our city without our wonderful, caring and comprehensive Plainfield Historic Preservation Committee. Commission. Thank you.
Thank you, Mister Buckman. Have a good evening.
You too.
Ms. Ferrone, good evening. Your name and address for the record. You're muted.
I didn't think I. Okay, I thought there were a lot of people before me. Um I'm just, I just want to say that.
Your name and address for the record, please.
Sorry, three twenty west thirty. I'm sorry, I didn't expect to speak. Three twenty West Thirty Eighth Street um uh in Manhattan. Um. I have been saying for years. That the Historic Preservation Commission needs to have more power, not less power. Um and so that's all I wanted to say and I I think people should vote against this. Uh no way should they um take away any power because they don't have enough power. Thanks, bye.
Thank you. Mister Havlena. Your name and address for the record, please.
William Havlena, fourteen oh two Watchung Avenue.
Good evening.
Um I will keep this brief, but I'm also speaking about the Historic Preservation Commission, MC twenty twenty two dash thirty five. Um my wife and I moved to Plainfield in nineteen ninety, so we're relatively long term residents, not lifelong residents, but been here quite a while. Um and we were involved at the time that we moved here. Um this this section of Watchung Avenue was not in historic district. Uh my wife and I, together with with a couple of neighbors, were um heavily involved in initiating. And in creating the Broadway Historic District um in this neighborhood. Um and primarily to to preserve the integrity of the of the district and of the architecture in the district. Um. Uh this is, I I believe at the time it was created anyway. Um uh perhaps the only or one of the few districts that has or had no nonconforming properties uh within it. Um and um. The removal of the review from property from some properties in a district could essentially destroy uh the 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 district. Um a few properties that are um not consistent with 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 what the district is about. Um the the district isn't about one or two individual properties within the district. It is about the district as a whole. And and removing that review um could could essentially destroy the the attractiveness. The desirability, the value of those whole districts and I and um I hope that the that the council. Uh considers what the impact of this could be on the desirability and and the the integrity of of Plainfield as a city. Thank you.
Thank you. Kirk. Good evening. Your name and address for the record.
Kirk Kim Pill, one three five three Watchung Avenue. Uh hello, everyone, and thank you for giving me a moment of your time. I just.
Good evening.
I just wanted to take some time to go over how important the historic board is to members of this. Myself, I'm a volunteer uh on the HPC. I have been part of several fundraisers and have spent thousands of dollars, including the fundraiser for the new decorative signs in the historic districts. Many people I talked to that live here and used to live here upside about this change. I am friends with people who have spent hundreds of thousands of dollars restoring historic homes and historic districts. And these changes may impact them financially. Um I just wanted to point these out to the board. Thank you.
Thank you, Kirk. Appreciate your comments. Kevin Barris, your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening, Council. My name is Kevin Barris. I live at seven ten Huntington Avenue. And uh my neighbor brought this to my attention and I find it a little concerning. I haven't been living or residing in Plainfield as long as other people have, but. Uh I'm just feeling a little bit nostalgic because my house just made its hundredth year anniversary and I absolutely love my home. Regardless of the fact that I have an extremely long commute to New York City every day to work. For me, it's it's pleasurable because when I come home, I'm absolutely just. Happy to be home and I love Plainfield since I've moved there. Um it it's just, I I I would hate to see, I guess for lack of a better expression. The Historic Preservation Commission and its controls. Basically kneecapped for, you know, some other fiscal end or. Something that ultimately would just really be to line someone else's pockets, which typically never helps anybody locally. And 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 I've seen all the things like this happen before, such as, you know, the loosening of the. And, and I've seen all the things like this happen before, such as, you know, the loosening of historic preservation laws, you know, destroying other historic towns like Somerville. And I would really be disheartened to see it happen here. Um, I moved here under the premise of being a, a long-term resident. I would still like to, but you know, in regards to that, you know, I, I, again, I really think would be a mistake. And obviously, I'm sure everyone else before me that spoke would agree that, again, to, you know, dissolve or any, you know, anything that would be done to the Historic Preservation Commission, it would be a mistake. Uh, thank you for letting me and hearing my comments.
Thank you, Mr. Barris. The Carol, your name and address for the record, please?
Good evening, I'm Virginia Carol. Those are my
I, I apologize, Ms. Carol. Good evening.
Good evening, everyone. Um.
Name and address for the record, please?
I'm Virginia Carol from thirteen hundred Prospect Avenue. Um, and this is our second home in Plainfield. We bought our first home in Plainfield in nineteen seventy-four. Um, and certainly we've seen a lot of changes over the years. Um, I'm speaking to the um, ordinance, um, MC twenty twenty-two dash thirty-five about the Historic Preservation Commission. Um. In the sixties and seventies, there were a lot of changes in Plainfield, a- as all of you probably know, and I'm not going to date myself or try to be specific about history. But what happened then uh, were a lot of homes were uh, bought up cheaply and uh, either broken up into multifamily homes or cheaply renovated. Um, and I think if you look back at history and see that and see what happened then in the eighties, when the Historic Preservation Commission was formed and the historic districts were formed, that you can see that that kind of destruction to the architecture and the character of the town was slowed considerably. Um, and, and truly, I, I think if you just drive through town, you can really see the difference between areas that are in historic districts and areas that are not. People will come in and do things as cheaply as they can possibly can and really ruin the character of perfectly good architecture. I think we have a lot to lose um, by crippling the HPC. We have home values that will go down. Um, we will lose grant money, as Ms. P O R said. And um, and as the resident from Fernwood said, she lives near a historic district, not in one. The house across the street from her has been cheaply done, and it has been. I've walked past there many times. It's a shame. A perfectly adorable little house. It's all aluminum sided at this point. There need to be some restrictions on this to preserve the home values in town. And I guess that's all I have to say on that. That's my point. Um, I hope you consider keeping the Historic Preservation Commission in place. Um, none of us like going before them. However, they really do a fine job for the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kara, for your comments. Z Romero, your name and address for the record, please? You're muted?
Sorry, it takes a moment.
I apologize. Zanira Romero, twelve sixteen Watchong Avenue. I think everyone has really spoken eloquently, went with great passion about the critical need to keep the HPC intact and fully functioning. It's very clear how important it is to maintain the historic homes that Plainfield is known for. Quality of life, which you've heard me on many calls, talking about just the quality of life in our area because of the noise, is one of the critical ingredients in economic development and the happiness of Plainfield and the historic preservation is an important part of this equation. A community's commitment to itself is a prerequisite for nearly all quality of life elements. No community can duplicate another historic resources. Um, rehab historic buildings also have stronger life expectancy than if you were to put up new structures. Um, historic architecture attracts tourism, such as heritage tourism, which centers around a city's historic features and is one of the most rapidly growing segments of the tourism industry, which we certainly can tap into if um, you know, we put our minds to it. Design guidelines encourage historic rehab that is authentic and strengthens historic neighborhood charm. I want to end it with the quote that I found from the importance of preservation of historic buildings and landmarks, resident style, which I found on the internet. It basically says, historic restoration is considered a powerful economic improvement and a development rise that drives nations towards prosperity. Old buildings and famous historic landmarks, excuse me, are the witnesses of mankind's development and the revolutionary change that took place over the years. So I'd like to leave you with that thought. I think you've heard it all. There's, like I said, a lot of passion, so please consider what we're saying and the importance of it. Thank you and good night.
Thank you, Ms. Romero.
President, we've exceeded Council President, we've exceeded the twenty minutes.
Yes, I would like to make a suggestion. If anyone that has their hand up, if you wouldn't mind, uh, just, uh, hopefully if you can, to hang out with us until we have uh, the general public comment at the end of the meeting and you'll be first to make your comments. So that's a suggestion. Hopefully you can hang on until we get to general public comments. Motion to close, public comment?
Moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstaining? Motion carries. Public comment is hereby closed. We now move on. Are there any questions uh, with resolution R two thirty-seven through R two thirty-nine dash twenty-two?
Yes.
Go right ahead, Councilwoman Davis.
Um, or R two thirty-seven, um, just what Plainfield resident are we acknowledging their life and legacy? Um, but as for the other two resolutions, um, I just want to take a moment out of this meeting, so this is not um, an oversight to these young people who are doing amazing things. Not only are they representing themselves well and their families well, but they're representing the city of Plainfield well. We have uh, Jack Virgo, who was selected as a medalist for the New Jersey State Governor's Jefferson Awards. And then we have uh, Jasmine Morell, who's being named as an ambassador athlete for the U.S. Association of Blind Athletes. And these are both two young people right here in the city of Plainfield who are doing great things, who are uh, showing the state and the rest of the country uh, what Plainfield has to offer. Uh, former school board member Cameron Cox and Terrence Johnson always said, um, there's talent all over Plainfield. I think that these two young people are the perfect example that there is talent all over this community and they deserve to be recognized and I don't want that loss in the other uh, things that we have going on in this meeting.
Thank you, Councilwoman Davis, and I would agree with you a hundred percent. Talent that we know of, and, and of course, there's talent that we have yet to see. So rightfully said, and, and so um, I believe um, the resolution, uh, the other resolution, uh, two thirty-seven dash twenty-two is uh, honoring the life and legacy of the Plainfield resident, Jean Black. Uh, introduced, of course, by us unanimously, the governing body. May her soul rest in peace and our hearts and uh, prayers go out to the family. Mr. Clerk, will you please proceed with the reading of the remaining resolutions, please?
We need a motion and a second and a roll call for those resolutions.
Uh, motion, please?
I move that we vote on R two thirty-seven dash twenty-two to R two thirty-nine dash twenty-two.
Is there a second?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstaining? Motion carries. Mr. Clerk?
Resolution R two forty twenty-two granting the advice consent to the appointment of Dave Marshall as tax collector.
Are there any ques- do, do we have any uh, questions from our, uh, the council regarding to this? If there are no questions, uh, may I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Is there a second? Uh, Councilman McCray, did you second? I'm sorry, sir. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstaining? Motion carries. Mr. Clerk?
Resolution two forty-one twenty-two authorizing settlement in the matter of Jonathan Lindsay versus the city of Plainfield.
Are there any questions? If none, I need a motion and a second.
So moved.
All in, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstaining? Motion carries.
Resolution two forty-two twenty-two authorizing and approving the redemption and release of the outstanding bonds and outstanding capital leases of the dissolved Plainfield Municipal Utilities Authority.
Council, uh, are there any questions? I need a motion and a second, please?
Moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstaining? Motion carries for R two, two forty-two dash twenty-two. Mr. Clerk?
Resolution two forty-three twenty-two requesting authorization to apply liens one hundred and forty-four, one hundred and forty-five properties that received payments from New Jersey American Water Bills that were delinquent more than sixty days.
Are there any questions?
Yes.
Councilwoman Davis, you have the floor.
Um, so a number of these properties are owned by, like, individual property owners. Uh, was there ever anything done to assist them before these liens were placed on their homes?
So, I could speak to this. I'm not sure if everyone is aware, but we used some of our American Rescue Fund money to pay off the water bills for our residents who were more than sixty days past due. And we wanted all of the residents to have the benefit, but not necessarily the out-of-town landlords. So we paid off the water bills for those that were in danger of losing their water service if they were a tenant in a landlord's building, and then if the landlord is not a Plainfield resident, this lien is being placed on the landlord to pay their water bill.
Yeah.
So he is paying this back? The landlords are
The landlords, because he wanted the Plainfield residents to have the benefit of not having their water shut off.
Exactly.
So the tenant, the tenants got the benefit, and now if the landlord's not a resident here, we're, we're placing a lien.
You're going back to him for the money to, to give it back. Okay, thank you. Is that good? Uh, Councilwoman Davis?
Yes.
Uh, are there any more questions? I need a motion and a second, please, for R two forty-three dash twenty-two.
So moved.
Moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstaining? Motion carries. Mr. Clerk, two forty-four dash twenty-two?
Resolution two forty-four.
Council President, could I make a quick motion to combine uh, R two forty-four dash twenty-two and R two forty-five dash twenty-two?
Is there a second?
So moved.
All in favor?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstaining? Motion carries. Combination of both. Mr. Clerk?
Resolution two two forty-six twenty-two authorizing approval to enter into a contract with Axon Enterprises for eight conductive energy devices.
Are there any questions?
Yes. Uh, Director Abney, um, this quote looks to be expired based off of the backup that was given um, with the agenda items. Are these, is this quote still good? Are these prices still the same? And I wasn't really clear. Are we renting or purchasing these just over time?
Good question.
Okay, first off, the quote numbers are still good. That's the yes. The contract is really for the devices because uh, in, in five, in five years, they out, they outlive their usefulness. So it's a constant re-upping of, of, of equipment that is state-of-the-art for the officers, and these are tasers.
Okay, so every five years, we're purchasing new ones? Or are we like renting them? And then five years, we're just rent, or, maybe not renting is the right word. Are we leasing them and then five years, we're leasing new ones, like, kind of like a car? Or is it like we're purchasing them just over five years?
For, for lack of a better term, yes. We're, 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 we're buying the rights to use them basically for five years. Uh, usually, like I said, it's a, it's a means of, of a, it's a police tool that we need uh, to combat using, I would say, deadly force. So you use this option to um, to help the officers in their, in their day-to-day uh, and their day-to-day uh, travels throughout the city. Uh, just to mention it, we haven't had any uh, actual uh, um, what's the word? We haven't had any actual uses of these tasers. We had one display that we had at the Netherwood train station a few years ago, but in the past five years, we haven't actually had to use them, but we would like to have them as a tool.
Oh, I know what a taser is. I was just asking, are we leasing them or buying them? But thank you so much.
You are.
Thank you, Director Abney. Um, if there are no further questions, can we have a motion?
I'd just like to commend the department, you know, I, I, I think it is important that that this, that the police force uh, that we constantly uh, try to make sure we're, we're not using deadly force or only use it when it's absolutely appropriate. And an investment in this, this non-deadly uh, tool uh, is a, is a, a uh, a furtherance towards uh, its mission, you know, to, to not have for, for Plainfield to like, not like the uh, like other communities. So just continue that. I know it's an ongoing effort. Uh, we never, you know, that pound on our chest too hard because, you know, things, unfortunate things happen, you know, but I applaud the efforts of the department for uh, its commitment uh, to non-deadly force.
Thank you, sir.
I believe we had a motion. Did we? If not, uh, did we have a motion for this?
Move.
If we haven't, I need a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstaining? Motion carries for R two forty-six dash twenty-two. Mr. Clerk, please?
R two forty-seven rescinding support for the location and operation of the cannabis retail business by Sapphire Pharma.
Are there any questions, colleagues?
Yes.
Councilwoman Davis?
Uh, Director Brown, can you just explain why we're rescinding support?
Uh, I will take that on, uh, Councilwoman Davis. Uh, and Director Jackson, I'm sorry. Thank you. Uh, we had granted uh, uh, permission for Sapphire Pharmacy, but uh, we had also in the pipeline enclave uh, market. And so they were originally, they've been in the pipeline since April. And so we're going to rescind the retail license for uh, Sapphire to replace that with uh, enclave uh, as the last retail. So remember, we're only issuing five regular retail licenses. So we're rescinding it for Sapphire and asking you, asking you to rescind it for Sapphire and asking you to vote in support of enclave. Again, it was in the pipeline before uh, we made an error, and so I'm bringing it back to you.
Thank you.
Council President, uh, based on what Direct, Director Jackson said, I would then make a motion to uh, combine two forty-seven dash twenty-two with two forty-eight dash twenty-two.
Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstaining? They have been combined. Thank you, Mr. Clerk?
Resolution two forty-nine twenty-two designating Plainfield Avenue FC Partners Urban Renewal LLC, redevelopment for the redevelopment of certain property in the city of Plainfield.
Are there any questions, council? If there aren't any, may I have a motion and a second? I'm sorry, Councilwoman Davis, do you have a question?
Yes.
Go right ahead.
Uh, Director Jackson, um, this is for the Kiona Academy?
Yes.
And I think we're also asking for a pilot for this property?
Yes.
So uh, to be clear, because I don't think I was really clear, I don't think I was clear in the understanding. So Kiona Academy is a nonprofit and they own the property. Um, but now a for-profit organization is going to own this property and then build a school on top of it?
Uh, yes, so Kiona has subdivided the property and they are selling a portion of the property to a private entity. The private entity will build a school for first uh, children, uh, which is severely uh, disabled students. And uh, we will be getting uh, if you approve both the redevelopment agreement and the pilot And uh, we will be getting uh, if you approve both the redevelopment agreement and the pilot. We will get taxes uh, on a portion of that property where we do not get taxes today.
Thank you.
Any more questions? If there are any unentertaining in motion and a second, please.
Moved, second.
All in favor? Any opposed, abstaining, motion carries, Mr. Clerk, we are two fifty dash twenty-two?
Two fifty twenty-two designating certain properties identified as block seven thirteen, lots one through five. As non-condemnation redevelopment areas.
Are there any questions, Council?
I hope.
I'm sorry, uh, Councilman McKenna. I, I think you both said something at the same time, but.
I'm gonna let um, ladies go first.
Why, thank you. Um, what are we looking to put in this area? I know that in this plan, we already have some of those apartment buildings are included within this plan. Are we looking to put more apartments there, different apartments? Are we looking to like, take down those apartments to build new apartments? Like, what's the ultimate goal?
So the gold here is the entire block that currently houses the Plainfield uh, Performing Arts Center. As well as seven hundred Park Avenue, as well as the multifamily property next to it, as well as the Park Hotel. Uh, the goal here is to make that an area in need of redevelopment. Uh, they have been before the planning board, uh, the planning board is recommending that we proceed. Uh, what we would like to see as a development there would be a new performing arts center. As well as a uh, mixed-use development. Uh, that would have arts-related studios on the ground floor as well as apartments above.
Okay, so I just have a follow-up question. So we have P-PAC, which was gifted to us from the Unitarian Society. With a potential new art center coming, what happens to that particular building in space? Is that considered a historic site? What's like the designation for that?
Yes, so the main uh, sanctuary uh, that we use as meeting space and all of that. Uh, that is the historic portion of the property. And so the historic structure will remain uh, assuming that we move forward, there will be an investment. Uh, in the interior space uh, to bring arts programming to that portion of the interior space.
Thank you.
Okay, all right, there are no more questions, I'll entertain a, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, uh.
Is that what happens when you let ladies go?
When you got ladies go first, it's, it's just forget all about the guy, you know? Go ahead.
I read up on this, but I I just want to circle back because um, because Ms. Plantagen had in the public comments asked a question. So I just wanted to circle back to that so you could answer that for her and others. And I think uh, Ms. Jackson, the Director Jackson, that mainly it's what is an area in need of and then what happens, which you. I understood, but more in our own little.
So an area in need of allows us to create a redevelopment area. So the action tonight by council would actually create the redevelopment area. Then immediately following that actual action, uh, a city would go then and create a redevelopment. Plan for this area. And quite frankly, this is not where a developer came to us. I actually went and recruited a developer to take a look at this block. And so again, uh, we are looking to redevelop that entire block. Does that answer it, Ms. Councilman?
I think, I think that did hit.
Okay.
Uh, as far as if I kept good notes.
Um, entertaining a motion and a second, please, for two fifty dash twenty-two, second, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? You oppose, any abstaining?
I just had one, just one, no, me.
Motion carries. Mr. Clerk?
Just to note, that was six in favor.
And one, and one opposed.
Um, resolution two fifty-one dash twenty-two authorizing purchase agreement between the city of Plainfield. And the drop-in Plainfield LLC for the Queen City Innovation Hub Acceleration Program.
Council, questions? If none, I need a motion to, a motion and a second, please.
You know, forgive me, you're doing the innovation hub, did we miss one?
No, yes.
Did we miss one? No, that was the.
We didn't miss two fifty-one dash twenty-two?
We are on two fifty. We're on two fifty-one now.
Why did he bring in the Innovation Hub, um, drop-in? Plainfield LLC, or did I hear that wrong?
No, that's what two fifty-one dash twenty.
I thought, I'm sorry, I thought I heard drop-in Plainfield LLC, which is the next one, my apologies.
It's been moved and second?
Moved.
All in favor? Any opposed? No one's abstaining, the motion carries, Mr. Clerk, carry on.
Resolution two fifty-two twenty-two authorizing the the release of the performance bond associated with the property. Five eighteen through seventy-eight was second.
Colleagues, any questions? If there are none, I need a motion and a second.
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed, abstaining, motion carries, Mr. Clerk, we're at two fifty-three dash twenty-two?
Two fifty-three twenty-two authorizing the application and acceptance of the Union County greening of Union County twenty twenty-two grant.
Are there any questions?
Yes.
Councilwoman Davis?
Uh, Director Jackson, do we have an idea of where these trees would be located?
Uh, at this point, uh, we are, uh, the department is recommending that a number of the trees be planted in the fourth ward. Uh, and so that is our recommendation for this year in conjunction with the Shade Tree Commission.
Thank you.
Director Jackson, uh, would we have access to where those trees will be planted? Can you, can you supply that information for us?
Yeah, we, we can provide a list uh, of where we would like to plant those trees, assuming we get the grant.
I appreciate that. That being said, uh, there are no more questions.
That also as well, um, as I'm on the Shade Tree Commission.
Yes.
And what we do, we do have a list of where the trees are going to be planted. It's not only in the fourth ward, we're doing, we're planting trees in all four wards. And and you're divided up into so many trees, it's about sixteen trees. Um, per um, ward, so um, but there are going to be some trees that go right by the M-Walk Square, so. Um, that's correct, and we do have a list.
And I would say that they're desperately needed, and I'm pretty sure Councilwoman Briggs-Jones would agree with me.
Yes.
Are there any questions further for this particular uh, resolution? If none, I need a motion and a second. All in favor? Any post, any abstaining, motion carries, Mr. Clerk, we're at two fifty-four?
Resolution two fifty-four authorizing approval to utilize the Morris County Co-op for the twenty twenty-two roadway improvement project.
Count, excuse me, uh, Council President, we didn't.
Director Jackson?
Uh, we didn't do the Queen City Innovation Hub. Resolution.
I'm, I'm feeling like we have different agendas. I'm off by one.
Yeah.
So there was an email that was sent out uh, earlier saying that the numbers of the agenda had slightly changed.
Yes.
Right.
One was put on economic development, social services, correct, Mr. Clerk? I'm sorry?
Right.
Right, okay.
He said this is.
Okay, so we didn't do the Queen City Innovation Hub.
We did.
Okay, I'm good. Okay.
Mr. Clerk, carry on, please.
We're on two fifty-four, correct?
Yes, dash twenty-two, yes.
Resolution two fifty-four twenty-two authorizing approval to utilize the Morris County Co-op. Roadway Improvement Project for million paving.
Oh, here we go.
Questions?
Yes.
Who's saying yes?
So I'm not in a background. So moved.
All in favor? Any, any opposed, abstaining? Motion carries, Mr. Clerk?
Resolution two fifty-five twenty-two authorizing approval to utilize the Morris County Co-op for contract replacement of ADA grants.
Are there any questions? I need a motion and a second.
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed, any abstaining, motion carries, two fifty-six dash twenty-two, Mr. Clerk?
Fifty-six twenty-two authorizing approval to submit a grant application and execute a grant contract with the New Jersey Department of Transportation.
Are there any questions? If none, I need a motion and a second.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed, any abstaining, motion carries, two fifty-seven dash twenty-two?
Two fifty-seven twenty-two authorizing approval to purchase ninety LED lights for South Avenue Improvement Project.
Are there any questions? I believe there were.
Director Dabney, can you just explain this uh, resolution?
Yes, this is for the improvement of the LED lights, trying to light up the city, the Plainfield City Initiative to light up the city. These were lights to replace the heads that are there, the old lights, to make melody lights, make them brighter along South Avenue.
So we're going to replace some of the lights that are on South Avenue, um.
All of, all the lights on South Avenue.
Replace all of the lights that are on South Avenue.
Correct.
Um, so how do we decide that South Avenue was the place that we needed to replace lights as opposed to maybe, maybe other parts of the city?
Well, we're going by street-by-street basis, South Avenue is something that's heavily used, so we started there and we're going to work our way around the city. It's part of the initiative, we have to start somewhere, right? So we started on South Avenue, everything the lights.
I mean, okay.
Director, these the, these are the, the decorative city.
Yes, decorative poles, the LED, yep, LED lights, they're going to brighten, make it brighter, yes. Decorative poles. And we're not going to, under the maze initiative, we're going to light up the whole city, that's the goal, uh, Councilman.
Motion?
Moved.
Favor? Any opposed, abstaining, motion carries, Mr. Clerk?
Resolution two fifty-eight twenty-two authorizing approval to submit a grant application and execute a grant contract with the New Jersey Department of Transportation.
Are there any questions? I need a motion and a second, please. All in favor? Any opposed, any abstaining, motion carries, we're at our two fifty-nine dash twenty-two, Mr. Jella?
Resolution two fifty-nine twenty-two authorizing approval to purchase Maxi Power Mobile Generator and Maxi Light Tower.
That's a lot of Max. Any questions? If none, I need a motion and a second, please.
Second.
All in favor? Any posts? If no one's abstaining, motion carries, Mr. Clerk?
Resolution two sixty twenty-two authorizing the award of professional service contract to.
Are there any questions? A motion and a second would be nice. So, all in favor? Any opposed? Any abstaining, motion carries, Mr. Clerk?
C- Council President, I'd like to make a motion to combine our two sixty-one dash twenty-two through our two sixty-five dash twenty-two.
Uh, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed, any abstaining? Mr. McKenna's motion is approved, Mr. Clerk, we're at the, I believe we're at two sixty-six dash twenty-two.
Correct, two sixty-six twenty-two designating SWE Plainfield Development Urban Renewal LP as redevelopment. The redevelopment of certain properties in the city of Plainfield.
Are there any questions?
Yes.
Councilwoman Davis?
Director Brown, can you uh, just explain, um, this resolution? So it looks like we're getting more apartments added, is that more than what was originally happening, or what exactly is happening?
So in total, uh, this total project will be five hundred units. And so for the new developer, if we, if you so designate them, they will increase by about a hundred and fifty, two hundred apartments. Two hundred apartments, I'm sorry.
That suffice for you, Councilwoman Davis?
Yes, it does.
I need a motion? All in favor? Any opposed, any abstaining? If not, motion carries, Mr. Clerk?
Just one second.
Two sixty-seven dash twenty-two?
Resolution two sixty-seven twenty-two recognizing July twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-two as World Hepatitis Day.
Uh, Council President motion to uh, vote on two sixty-seven dash twenty-two to two seventy dash twenty-two.
Is there a second? All in favor? Any opposed, any abstaining, that motion carries, I believe we're at two seventy-one, Mr. Clerk?
Resolution two seventy-one twenty-two authorizing a service agreement with Monith Telecom for telephony services.
Are there any questions?
Yes.
Councilwoman Davis?
Um, has this already started? Because in the backup, there's a signed service agreement from June thirtieth, and it was signed by the BA. Has the work already began on this project?
No, it starts in August.
BA Levinson, will you tell what the savings will be, please?
I read the resume. It, it's okay, you don't have to tell me, I already read it, and I, my only question was, did it start? Because a service agreement was already signed before it was brought to council and a vote was taken, that was my only question.
And for the public, BA Levinson, will you please say what the savings will be?
Yes, so the savings will be twelve hundred dollars a month, and just so you know. We were dropped by our previous provider who's not going to order that, who's not going to provide that service anymore, so. We had to switch, and obviously, this is the, this is the best, um, the next best option, cheaper option as well. And we had, we had to let them know that we were going to be moving forward, otherwise there would have been a gap in telephone services. So while it doesn't start until August, we did have to let them know that to please proceed, so that we wouldn't have any gap in service.
Council President?
Yes, uh, Mr. Mayor, you have something to say, sir?
Yes, I just want to add that the previous provider has pretty much left a number of municipalities. And they're no longer supporting um, phone services in several municipalities, Plainfield being one of them. So we did what we needed to do in order to make sure that we continue to provide the service to our. Various departments and to the city of Plainfield.
So I hear what the mayor and what the BA is saying, and I understand not having a gap in services. But my only concern is, is that there was a service agreement signed before this was even brought to the council and approved by the council for this to happen.
Yeah, just so you know, it had to be provided back, otherwise we wouldn't be, we wouldn't be set for our August start time. So nothing has happened, no money has transferred hands, we just had to give them a heads-up that we were putting them on and go ahead and please start installing everything.
I would also add that in the event the council didn't approve it, we would immediately terminate the agreement, granted, we would have no phone service, but we could certainly terminate the agreement without expenditure of funds.
So once again, I hear what everybody's saying, I'm not placing blame on anyone, I'm not. You know, but all I'm saying is, is that an agreement was signed before it was approved by council, that's what I'm saying, and. That's it. Um, I do have another question, um, what is IT's role in the rollout of this new phone system?
I believe that is on the line.
Mr. Singleton, Director Singleton?
Well, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Oh, okay. Yeah, I'm, I'm just responsible for making sure that all this gets done in a timely manner. Uh, since Ron has left and this normally was part of the uh. Audit departments and phone system is now been rolled over into my responsibility.
Thank you.
Are there any more questions? If not, I need a motion and a second, please.
Motion.
Our second, all in favor? Any opposed, any abstaining, motion carries? We now move to introduction of ordinances on the first reading. Clerk, will you please read MC twenty twenty-two dash thirty-one by its title?
MC twenty twenty-two thirty-one is an ordinance to amend and supplement chapter sixteen vehicles and traffic, article seven through street stop intersections, stop and yield intersections. Designating certain four-way stop intersections, and this is. designating certain four-way stop intersections, and this is Spooner and West Third Street and Spooner and West Fourth Street.
Uh, uh, I believe it was, uh, was it you Valerie or was it Director Abney? That Director Abney, you were saying it would defeat the purpose if we did. Tell me what you would, please tell the public what you and the council what you, what we discuss.
Okay.
About that Spooner.
Hmm. Spooner and Fourth, um, over doing the same study that we did on Watchung Avenue last month. Spooner and Fourth had thirty-two accidents. And Spooner and Third had seven accidents. So the question becomes, well, why would you put four-way stop signs at an intersection that only had seven accidents? What you find out is that if you use traffic calming devices on one street, speeders will just go over to a street that runs parallel in speed on that street. Now, West Third Street from Plainfield Avenue to Grand Avenue and then from Grand Avenue all the way down to the city line is notorious for being a speeding area throughout the city. So I felt it was necessary, considering the study and what we were doing, to add these, these, uh, stop signs on Third Street to slow motorists down for the safety of the public and children in the area.
Thank you, Director Abney. Colleagues, are there any questions?
Um, Director Abney, thank you for that, uh, explanation, because that was literally my question about why are they just a block apart? I'm actually glad to see it on Fourth and Spooner because I was just driving over there today and this lady continued to inch out from Spooner while I was coming down Fourth Street, even though she had a stop sign. So hopefully this, uh, helps with the number of accidents over there.
Yes, I think it will. Well, well, there also is a, um, a bus stop there on the corner. As we discussed earlier, myself and Director Dabney will be making sure that, uh, that, that, that curbs are painted and, uh, the lettering is placed in the street. It's gonna, it's a, it's an in-depth project that we'll be doing in the area.
And, uh, Director Dabney, we're still gonna have the crossing guard there also as well, right? Um, in that area that I'm telling you, that crossing guard, the, the kids are taller than the crossing guard. And he's a little old guy that's over there. And of course, this is my area. I'm right here in this area. So I'm glad to see that they wanna entertain this, um, because where I live at, of course, is Fourth and Plainfield Avenue is the main drag. It's like a, it, I'm telling you, if I had um, a hand radar, I can really make some money for this, for the, um, town. Because these people, they really, really do speed up and down Fourth Street. And, um, hopefully that'll stop that, uh, you know, a little. Um, you know, it'll slow down the traffic a lot, so I'm, I'm glad that this is gonna happen.
Yep, yes ma'am. And to address your concern about the, uh, about the crossing guard, he still will be out there. And as always, we are still looking for more.
Okay, I'm entertaining a motion to adopt this ordinance on its first reading.
Moved. Second.
Second.
Clerk, may I have a roll call?
Councilmembers Briggs Jones.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Hockaday.
Yes.
Hannah.
Yes.
Mills Ransom.
Yes.
Vice President McCray. Council President Good.
Yes.
That is unanimous. This ordinance has been adopted on first reading.
Mr. Clerk, will you proceed with MC twenty twenty-two dash thirty-two, please?
MC twenty twenty-two thirty-two is an ordinance to the city of Plainfield and the county of Union, granting a tax exemption with respect to a portion of certain property identified on the city's tax map as Block, Block five oh nine, Lot one, and designating, designated the city's tax records as ten thirty through eleven oh eight Plainfield Avenue, Plainfield, New Jersey, and authorizing the execution of financial agreement with Plainfield Ave FC Partners Urban Renewal LLC.
Colleagues, are there any questions? Um, now I entertain a motion to adopt this ordinance on its first reading.
Moved.
Second.
Mr. Clerk?
Councilmembers Briggs Jones.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Hockaday.
Yes.
Hannah.
Yes.
Mills Ransom.
Yes.
Vice President McCray. Vice President McCray.
Yes.
Council President Good.
Yes.
Unanimous, this ordinance has been adopted on first reading.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Proceed to MC twenty twenty-two dash thirty-three.
MC twenty twenty-two thirty-three is an ordinance to the city of Plainfield, county of Union, state of New Jersey, adopting the two hundred through two hundred sixteen Garfield Avenue Redevelopment Plan dated June sixteenth, twenty twenty-two.
Questions?
Yes.
Councilwoman Davis?
Uh, Director Jackson, um, what is the vision for this area and that vacant land that's there now?
Oh, the redevelopment plan outlines a number of permitted uses. Uh, this particular property sits in the flood zone. And so there cannot be, uh, residential in this particular area. So, uh, the vision is any retail, commercial, uh, development can take place at this particular location.
Okay, you repeat that one more time. So there won't be any apartments going there?
No, it is in the flood zone. Uh, it would require DEP approval. A DEP is not approving residentials where you cannot get out, uh, in the case of a hundred-year flood for, with, uh, unless you can get out by automobile. And in this case, we can't provide a hardship option. Uh, so there will be retail and commercial uses that are permitted in this redevelopment plan.
But I have a, a question regarding one of the permitted uses. I believe it was a self-storage facility.
Yes, that's a commercial use, yes.
Does someone want to store their stuff in a flood zone?
Well, that will be their option. Uh, it is not something that is not permitted. Now, in a flood zone, there will be certain elevations that they have to meet, uh, regardless of whether it's commercial or retail. And so those elevations are determined by DEP.
I'm, I'm just trying to picture a self-storage place similar to the one on South Avenue over there on Garfield.
Right.
It doesn't feel like the neighborhood.
Yeah, actually, I've looked at it very closely, uh, and this area is not really zoned, uh, for single-family homes. It's actually currently zoned, uh, the surrounding properties for neighborhood commercial.
Right, but there's a lot of homes over there.
There are some homes, but those are homes that actually, one of the homes that's right adjacent to the property is really a commercial property. It has, uh, behind it, a commercial operation.
And what about on the other side, the east side of, of, uh, Garfield? Residential, right?
No, it's still pretty much neighborhood commercial, as I recall. There is something that has, and I, I don't have the redevelopment plan, but it almost looked like storage of autos.
I might, they might have just been a lot.
They might, they're what?
Might have just been a lot of them parked there.
It, well, I think it's a commercial establishment, but it's a lot of autos that are parked there.
Okay.
I need a motion.
Moved. Second.
Mr. Clerk?
Councilmembers Briggs Jones.
Yes.
Councilwoman Davis.
Yes.
Yes.
Councilman McKenna.
Uh, no.
Councilwoman Mills Ransom.
Yes.
Vice President McCray.
Yes.
Council President Good.
Yes.
It's in favor, wanna oppose?
Oh.
This has been adopted on first reading.
Proceed.
Now come to MC twenty twenty-two thirty-four is an ordinance authorizing the purchase of certain real property commonly known as five twelve five twenty-four Watchung Avenue identified as Block eight thirty-five, Lot four on the tax map of the city of Plainfield.
Are there any questions? Councilmembers?
Yes.
Councilwoman Davis, go right ahead.
Um, so I have a couple of questions. One, do we know who currently owns the YMCA? All right, cool. I'll just keep asking my questions.
Uh, so, uh, uh, Mr. President, I.
Uh, Mr. Mr. Mayor, you have something to say, sir?
So I thought the council would, you know, get out her questions so that the administration could attempt to answer.
Oh, I, I can do that. No, that's fine. If that's what works better for the administration, I could do that. Um, what appraisals are we using to purchase the YMCA? Are we using their appraisals or did the city appraise that property itself? Um, why does the city actually need this property? Um, and this, so in the ordinance is saying for a mixed-use, uh, development, but the city is not in the business of redevelopment. So what's the rationale behind this purchase? Um, what's the benefit to the taxpayers of purchasing this and where would the money come from for this purchase?
Uh, BA, BA Levinson?
If the BA and Valerie wanna go first, that's fine. Uh, uh, go ahead, BA.
Okay. So, with the city did get our own appraisal, um, from the firm that we use to do appraisals, and that's where we got that figure from. I think, uh, Director Jackson probably knows who the owner is. I know that it recently switched hands. Um, so I'll, I'll let her answer that question. And then for the use of the property, I'm gonna let the mayor speak on that because it's a very exciting use and, um, I'm sure, I'm sure we should allow him to announce that.
So, in regards to the property itself, it was appraised by Sokler Realty, which does the appraisals for the city. Uh, the, uh, so they, they do most of the appraisals that we get for property appraisal. And, uh, the appraisals that we get usually can withstand condemnation. The current owner is a developer who had gone before our boards and got approval uh, to do a development there. And again, like any other property, uh, the value goes up in time uh, based on the market. And so when we initially appraised this property back in two thousand nineteen, it has gone up since then because it has changed ownership from the original owner to the new owner. And as it relates to the money being proposed to be used as ARPA funds uh, for the per, purchase of, of this particular property. And I'll let the mayor talk about the use.
Well.
The proposed use, okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, and Director. Um, one of the questions that Councilwoman Davis asks is why the need as well as the benefits to the taxpayers? Well over five years ago, I outlined a plan to create the Plainfield Center of Excellence at Hannah Atkins. And the purpose of that was to provide wholesome recreational activities indoors as well as cultural and artistic and other kinds of programs. And the goal was to have this major project in the fourth ward, which I have said so many times that we need to bring the fourth ward along every opportunity that we get, and it should not be left behind.
Yes.
So, my vision was to have the Plainfield Center of Excellence at Hannah Atkins. We had renderings that uh, a couple of council members saw over the years. I talked about this in campaign speeches. And we made a very strong effort to have a center of excellence at Hannah Atkins. We kept hitting the wall with the state and with their, uh, green acres. Even though we demonstrated that there would be a net gain of green space because we had planned, if all went well and if it was embraced by, uh, green acres, to take in that, I'm gonna call it Paper Street, that runs from Mount Olive along the tracks to Plainfield Avenue. And that would allow us to capture more green space. However, you know, after trying for so many years and despite our strong desire to have it located there, we had to abandon the effort because we were not getting the support that we needed from green acres. And so, we had to shift gears. And given the fact that the YMCA was slated for development and for whatever reason, the developer was unable to move that project. And with the strong desire of the administration to provide a plainfield center of excellence, we switched gears. And we decided that it would be in the best interest of the city to not let the YMCA sit there in languish and that given the fact that we needed to create the Plainfield Center of Excellence that will be made up of a plethora of recreational, um, offerings as well as culture and arts and education and so on and so forth, that it made sense for us to invest in acquiring the Y and setting up a process that would see public input into the programming that will go there. We made a visit to the facility in Piscataway. And we were very impressed. Some people think that you can create the kind of project that we were looking to create overnight. It took Piscataway over twenty years to get to where they are. And so we studied that model very closely and carefully. And we would have loved to be at Hannah Atkins, we can't be. So we're shifting gears and moving to the YMCA where there will be a survey that will be made available to the public so we can get input from the public in terms of what should go in there, in terms of the fees for service, because this will not be a, a, a facility that would be totally funded by taxpayer dollars. The goal is that this will be a self-sustaining facility and that the user fees and so on will pay to that service, similar to what happens with the one in Piscataway. So that is the reason why we are acquiring the YMCA to create the Plainfield Center of Excellence, which is needed and which the public will help to shape what it looks like. So, in addition um, to the survey that will be, uh, uh, put out there, uh, virtually, we will also conduct two or three charrettes in different parts of the city to get that additional input. But we see this as a major investment on the part of the city for the benefit of the entire city. And I had planned to address this in the brief comments that I will give pertaining to the questions and some of the misinformation about why the change in the HPC ordinance. And I can tell you, the proposed changes in the HPC has ab, have absolutely nothing to do with the YMCA. Absolutely nothing to do with Grace Church. And so those are all tidbits of misinformation that is circulating out there without a basis. So I wanted to give you that little flavor for what we intend to do across the street from City Hall at the former YMCA, which will be known as the Plainfield Center of Excellence.
Any more questions?
Um, yes, I don't think my question of where, oh wait, no, never mind, it did, we did get that answer. Um, I have other questions. I need to let them marinate in my brain first.
I, I have a, a question regarding why the resolution says, uh, says ends with, whereas the city of Plainfield after careful examination and analysis, including of the appraisal report prepared for the property, has determined that it is necessary, beneficial, and in the public interest to acquire the property for the redevelopment of property with mixed-use residential and commercial redevelopment. So is there gonna be residential in the Center of Excellence?
Absolutely not.
No.
So why do we have a resolution that says it's gonna be redeveloped with mixed-use residential and commercial redevelopment?
If that is in there, that is clearly an error, must have been based on a previously drafted, uh, resolution. Um, but this has nothing to do with redevelopment for any developer. This is the city's project, and there will not be any residential whatsoever at that location.
And no commercial. And no commercial.
Commercial in the sense of what the city does with the property. But if, if you're thinking retail and that kind of stuff, no, absolutely not.
Okay, and why, if, you know, if we're looking out, as, as Mr. Montello beautifully said earlier that, you know, it's our responsibility to look out for the taxpayers and fiduciary respect, among other things. Why aren't we driving a har- harder bargain with this? The, the, the owner of it bought it for about two, four point one or so. Why are we not, you know, that now they've got a project that, or a property they're not going to develop? I'd say they're more inclined to want to get rid of the property.
Well, I will let Dave also try to address that. But I can tell you, um, and I know Councilor Davis was asking, you know, in terms of our desire to move forward with the property next door at the Salvation Army. She was asking about the appraisal and so on and so forth. And why can't we give, you know, the Salvation Army an opportunity to come up with some appraisal? Well, we are consistent. We use an appraiser to go out and appraise these properties when there is some level of interest on the part of the city, whether to reassess, whether to acquire. We use a realtor, not, not a, a realtor, an appraiser. And the appraiser gave us an appraisal, just like we are. We questioned from the Salvation Army that we pay the appraised market value of the property. Then the same is true for what we are trying to do across the street at the YMCA.
Mr. Montello, would you like to chime in or?
I, I don't have much to add. I mean, that's exactly it. I mean, we, in the event that our appraisal number wasn't accepted, we'd be in the same boat again with, with, with the Y. We, we have to work on an appraised number because the only number that we can offer is a fair market value number. Because in any court of law, that will be the standard by which we will be judged, what, what we're going to have to pay.
You're, you're, this, the city is, is under, according to the law, the city, when it buys a piece of property, has got to pay fair market value. We're not talking about a condemnation area. You're, you're offering to buy a piece of property from somebody, one entity from another.
Exactly. We always, we, we have to, what we do in every instance in which we purchase property is we go, we have to, we get an appraisal. And, and we are.
Why wouldn't you get three appraisals? You might get one that's lower than the one you got.
Because if we were ended up in a, in a condemnation action, every one of those appraiser, appraisals would be discoverable because now we're in litigation.
You're, so this isn't a condemnation property.
But, but if in the event that, in the event that we were unable to acquire, now this case, we, 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 we struck a deal and we're very grateful that we did. But if we were unable to strike, strike a deal as we did in Salvation Army, we would be back before you with an, with an ordinance authorizing, uh, the ability to file a condemnation action. Once we file litigation, every piece of paper is a potentially discoverable. So every, if we had multiple appraisals, they all have to come before the court. So if we get one, we get two, we get three, they're all coming forward. So that's why we get one that we think is good and reputable and we lead with that. And we've worked with the same company for a long time and we've, we're, we feel comfortable with that.
You know.
I directed the Corporation Council and the Business Administrator to pursue this property. And if we were experiencing any difficulties, not to hesitate to pursue condemnation. Fortunately, we didn't have to do that.
Well, lucky for the seller. Tell me something. So we're going to be five point, let's just round it up, five point two million to buy this piece of property. Then what, what are we looking at for cost to, uh, retro upgrade? I know that building better than anybody on this, on this call. So tell me, how, how much are we looking at to make the modifications to make it a center of excellence?
That will all be determined by what the public want to see in that space. And so we will take public input and then we will pursue with the, um, the, the, the architectural and engineering work that would be required to get it to what we and the public want it to be. So we don't have a cost on that at this point.
So we have, we are, we don't only put the cart before the horse, but we've got a cart and we don't even have an intention of buying a horse. I mean, you're talking about, you're talking about getting public input, charrettes, et cetera, that could come up with 25 different things that they like to see in it, of which none of those are, a good percentage of those may not even be applicable to that property. Maybe they want big fields and, and outdoor areas and that, that property doesn't lend itself to that. So, so we're going to spend five point two million dollars and then we're going to have to figure out how to jam this all into that lot and just say, well, that's the best we could do for that lot. I, I think this is a little bit of a, of a rush here and, and an awfully big expense for, for, with taxpayer money to, to then go wing it afterwards and figure it out.
And to the council, the administration has no further comments.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Montello.
I have some follow-up questions.
Okay, we're going to, uh, Councilwoman Davis. Can we bring those questions out?
Yes. So what happens after we buy this property, right? We're going to have these town halls, we're going to have all of these things to get public input. But what is now the city's liability to own a building that we've kind of had, that the developer has had problems with? And if the developer is failing to, uh, be able to do the development in this area, like, wouldn't we be able to negotiate a better price and get it for less? Because it kind of looks like we're rewarding a failed developer right now.
Yeah. So let me comment on that. First of all, uh, the developer is not a failed developer. We approached the developer about this property. The developer does not have this par- property on the market. And we approached the developer about this property. And by the way, uh, if we weren't doing a center of excellence, there are plenty of other developers that are also interested in this property. So I just want to clarify that first of all. We offer fair market value as Corporation Council has indicated. So when the city buys a property, we want to be prepared that the appraisal would withstand the scrutiny of eminent domain. And so, uh, we made an offer for the property to the developer and he has agreed. Now, as it relates to what the mayor said was about the charrettes, the planning department, uh, or the planning division will do what the planning division normally does in terms of community engagement. And in that process, uh, the community may have a big wish list, but we are going to help the community and guide them in prioritizing that list. That is what planners normally do. So that's going to be part of the process. And so based on what the community would like to see there, for example, an indoor pool is kind of like a no-brainer. And so we would then come back and say, and do a needs assessment on what it takes to bring that pool up to par. And that's what the mayor was referencing when we will look at the cost of it. But right now we're using ARPA funds and, uh, we do not know the cost of the additional investment at this time.
Okay. Councilwoman Davis, are you done?
Is there a deadline to deploy these ARPA funds?
Director Ja- Jackson?
That's usually not me, but I think there are deadlines for the ARPA funds.
I believe it's by 2025 or 26.
Thank you.
2024.
Okay.
Actually, that is a dead thing.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
To uncover the funds, but we are out to, until 25 to use all the money.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. And Mr. Montello, just one last question. Can you explain, uh, to the public the difference between condemnation and offering to purchase a property, uh, like open market, like what we're doing with the YMCA?
Well, with the, with the Y, we, we just approached them and, and asked them if they'd be interested in selling the property. And luckily they were amenable to our offer, you know, offer to purchase. In the case of the Salvation Army, it's, it, we did the same thing. We started off the same way. Asking them, trying to bring them to the table, to have a conversation, which was not easy. Took number of months and continued and continued and continued only till the point where we now had to bring forth an ordinance to, uh, authorize the administration to use condemnation powers for them to now then at least advise us that they're looking at our, our offer. So it's merely, it's, it's part of the same process, but luckily with the Y, it just didn't take as long as it's now been taking with the Salvation Army.
Okay. Thank you, uh, Director Jackson, BA Levinson, and of course, Corporation Council. I'm entertaining a motion and also a second. Mr. Clerk?
Councilmember Briggs Jones.
Yes.
Davis.
Now.
Hockaday. Yes. McKenna.
No.
Mills Ransom.
Yes.
Vice President McCray. Council President Good.
Yes.
Five in favor to oppose ordinance been adopted on first review.
Mr. Clerk, will you proceed with MC 2022 dash 35?
MC 2022 35 is an ordinance to the city of Plainfield and County of Union amending and supplementing the municipal code, chapter 17, article four, entitled Historic Preservation Commission in article 10, entitled Historic Preservation Controls.
Director Jackson, with the slew of, uh, comments and questions earlier in our meeting, I, I am going to yield the floor to you prior to moving further with this particular ordinance.
Thank you, Council President. First of all, I'd like to clarify, um, on some of the comments and the statements that have been made. The roles of the, uh, the Department of Economic Development supports, provides the support for the HPC, the Shade Tree Commission, the Planning Board and the Zoning Board of Adjustment. The roles of those boards and commission are defined by the municipal land use law. And I have on, uh, I have, it's an echo. Okay, I have on the, uh, in the waiting room on here is our special redevelopment council. And I'm going to have her, after I talk, speak to, uh, the, the statute. Because I think it's important for the public to understand. So that the municipal land use law defines the roles and responsibilities of our boards and our commissions. Another point of clarification is that all enforcement power resides with the administration, not with the board, not with the commission. Enforcement powers reside with the administration. And in the case of historic properties, that enforcement power rests with the zoning officer for the city of Plainfield. So the zoning officer is the enforcement arm. So if someone goes out and they do something to a historic property that is inappropriate, then that zoning officer is the one that investigates and makes a recommendation to the court. So I just want to be clear about that. In terms of more clarification is that I, as the director of the department, brought these recommendations to the mayor. And I will explain the rationale for the recommendations that are before you. So the mayor didn't say, Valerie, just go destroy the HPC. We're not doing that. What we are doing is ensuring that the roles of the boards and commissions are consistent with the municipal land use law and consistent with our own ordinance. So I really want to clarify that for the public. So we're eliminating inconsistencies in the ordinance. For example, uh, section 17 colon four dash 12 said the HPC should recommend to the planning board and advise on those projects that we have, that appear before the board. So the role of the HPC remains the same as it relates to homeowners. What we're recommending here to streamline city and site plan application processes is that we follow the municipal land use law. And that is that when a site plan application is submitted to a board, that the board then refers for comments and reports and recommendations to the appropriate commission, in this case, the HPC. And they're to provide their recommendations back to that board. And why is that so important? Because according to the law, the planning board or the zoning board as it relates to those site plans, have the final say. And they, they create memorization of resolutions that say what the applicant must comply with. And so that enables us as the administration to go out and enforce whatever those obligations are. And so to streamline, county and state governments in historic areas do not come to the HPC for permission. Why should we burden the city with that as well? And by filing the application, by them giving us a report, by them having the historical consultant as part of the TRC, we make sure that we capture all of the design elements and create the appropriate record keeping and memorialization. The Department of Economic Development is the body responsible for keeping all of these reports and ensuring compliance with our requirements. So I just want to clarify that. We have 10 historic districts. And the vast majority of our historic districts, uh, they are single-family homeowners. You will still come before the HPC if you want to make a change to your property. If you're in that historic district. What we are talking about are the responsibilities of the planning board and the zoning board vis a vis the HPC. The other problem is that the HPC, when they are doing their informational reviews, when they're reviewing some of these site plans, does steps continually, steps outside of the purview of the HPC. They talk about parking, they talk about density, they talk about height requirements. All things that are the province of the other boards. And so what we're doing is simplifying, clarifying, and making the process more efficient. So this is not a political, I brought, meaning I as the director, am making recommendations to clarify the ordinance where there are inconsistencies in the ordinance itself. And ensuring that we follow the state statutes, the municipal land use law. And with that, I'm very passionate about this because I've sat in these meetings. I've seen people get confused about who's on first and who's not. And with all this going on with supply chain issues and other issues, it is incumbent upon us to ensure that we streamline our processes. With that, can I get IT to add Jennifer Credidio on for McManon and Scotland and Baumann to talk about the law? Because a lot of people have quoted it, but we do have counsel that represents us, the city and city council on these matters. Jennifer?
IT, are you able to do that? IT, are you able to do that, uh, for us at the request of the director?
See your picture.
There we go. Good evening, Jennifer. Are you there? Yes. Good evening.
Jennifer, are you on mute? Good evening. Sorry, it takes a minute when they promote you for the screen to reload. Good evening, uh, Mayor, Council President, members of the council, members of the public. For the record, my name is Jennifer Credidio. I'm a member of the firm at McManam and Scotland and Bowman. We are privileged to represent the city of Plainfield, the Special Redevelopment Council. Um, you know, it's, it's always a pleasure to follow Director Jackson. Uh, she does have my work for me. But, um, the municipal land use law, um, as we said, you know, lays out the responsibilities under the statute of Historic Preservation Commissions pretty clearly. And one of the things that it does is it says where we have a referral, where we have a planning application, an application to the planning board and application zoning board, there is a referral that has to take place to the HPC. And the HPC may, doesn't have to, may make recommendations to that board. It also asks that testimony be given or available to the planning board or zoning board so that those considerations, those important historic considerations can be viewed in part of the overall larger picture. Not Plainfield, different municipality. Very many years ago, I sat through a planning board meeting one night where, um, the, uh, fire official wanted, um, certain materials for, uh, the parson wanted to build a carport uh, onto the parsonage so that he didn't have to shovel snow off his car when he went out to give, uh, you know, minister the sick in the winter. The fire official had one set of concerns, the hysterical, the historic preservation body had another set of concerns about how that would appear. And so having those recommendations from both of those bodies come in together before the planning board, they're able to, you know, marry those for something that met all of the concerns. And, you know, important policy considerations that the municipality was dealing with. Um, just a few points of clarification. You know, I heard a couple of speakers tonight say that, you know, the HPC is being disbanded or, you know, somehow being terminated, um, in section seventeen, colon ten point, ten dash four of your ordinance. The language with respect to, um, you know, review of planning and zoning board applications. This follows very closely the verbiage of the statute and is very close to what was there before. The difference here is before you were doing a separate approval essentially where you had a planning and zoning application, you were having historic preservation approval, you were having a planning approval. The statute calls for that referral to result in a recommendation to the planning board. And that's what the new, uh, if adopted, the new section, uh, seventeen, colon ten dash four would do. You'll also notice that where you're, you have permits that do not result in an application to the planning or zoning board. Perfect example, an application to demolish, right? I have an application to, I want a permit to demolish a historic structure. I'm not before the planning or zoning board. That is still going through the certificate of appropriateness process. It's still going to HPC. Another thing to please note, there were a couple of clarifications that were made with, uh, in the ordinance with a desire to both formalize the procedure and make sure that the, um, the, the process was more accessible to those who need to be heard by the HPC. Previously, your ordinance said they had to meet no more than quarterly. Uh, the proposed ordinance would have them meet monthly, would have them keep verbatim, uh, minutes of their, uh, verbatim records of their meetings, much the same way that a planning board or zoning board does in order to help the transparency and help implement the HPC's decisions moving forward and their recommendations moving forward. Uh, Council President, I'm happy to take any questions, um, that you may have or that your colleagues may have.
Thank you so much, uh, for, uh, that explanation of, of probably most, if not all of the questions and concerns that those that, uh, logged in to, uh, make their comments. Uh, Director Jackson, thank you as well. Um, council colleagues, uh, do you have any questions for Director Jackson and for, uh, Ms. Credidio?
Yes.
Uh, Councilwoman Davis, go right ahead.
By changing this ordinance, what is the benefit to the individual homeowners, uh, in that area? So, uh, Director Jackson said it's mostly single family homes in these historic districts. So how does this benefit them by us changing this ordinance?
Uh, so Councilwoman, I don't know if you'd like me or Director Jackson to answer that. I, I think that as, uh, you know, and you, you have a property owner, you know, homeowner who's going through this process. Um, this allows a more streamlined process, allows for, um, that process to be less time consuming, consuming and onerous to the property owner while still making sure that the HPC's concerns are heard, represented and incorporated in those planning and zoning decisions at the planning and zoning board meetings.
Let me, I, if either one, whoever can jump in and answer the question from any of the council. That's good. That's, that's very good. Whoever can.
Uh, Council President, I forgot to mention one thing.
What is that?
Earlier, they talked about grants. They talked about CLG, uh, Nancy Peewar.
Nancy Peewar, yes, she did.
Our department is the one that supports those grants. And so many of the grants that are historic in nature, we are the ones pushing and promoting that. Uh, so I just want to be clear, there will be no change.
Cause it was said that we, they would lose them.
No.
We heard a lot of that tonight.
Yeah, so we, we actually, so the consultant, uh, works for both the city and the HPC. So it is the historical architect who, who, uh, submits the CLG application. And furthermore, we make the city's grant writers available uh, to Ms. Peewar on a number of her historic projects as well. So we are out there. I want to clarify that because I think it's important. We support historic preservation. And we're willing to do the grants. It is in our master plan. All of those things are things that we support and we also personally feel very strongly about.
Director Jackson, please say that again. We support what?
We support historic preservation. And we support these grants, uh, to preserve property. Uh, so we are the ones that are also moving hand in hand in terms of historic preservation. And I just want to make sure that, uh, the general public understands that. Cause we get a lot. I remember when we talked about redevelopment of the why. There was a lot of hysteria and misinformation about the why being demolished. I remember going to one public meeting on that. And one woman was so upset because she didn't get to speak and I just personally touched her and said, we are not going to demolish the why. And so I want to be clear that the administration, that the Department of Economic Development, that we support historic preservation.
Thank you.
Thank Council President.
Mayor, yeah, you have something else to say, Mayor?
Yes, this is a good point for me.
Go right ahead, sir.
Say a few words. Now, I think both Director Jackson and our redevelopment attorney have provided answers to so many of the questions that were asked as it pertains to this particular ordinance. And I know that the speakers this evening were well intentioned. And it's because of their love and care for historic preservation and for the ten wonderful historic districts that we have. I know it is that passion that flowed out this evening causing them to make some of the statements that they made. But a lot of what was said by our speakers was based on misinformation. And I hope that now that Director Jackson and our redevelopment attorney have clarified and presented factual information about what this all entails and what it is really about, what is driving it. I hope that it's clarified a lot of the questions in the minds of many of our speakers. I live in the Van Vliet Brook Historic District. I love the fact that I live in a historic home in a historic district. And I'm not going to change that for anything for as long as I can afford it. And so the notion that we want to get rid of the HPC, nothing can be further from the truth. We don't for one second want to get rid of the HPC. But if there are changes that need to be made in order to make processes more efficient and effective, that is precisely what we want to do. We are not kneecapping the HPC. That's not happening, not under my watch, but we are always about improving processes, making it easier for the city as well as for homeowners and business people that come here to do business. So I just want to make those points and be, so, so the city, as you know, is an instrumentality of the state of New Jersey. And like the county, like the state, we need to be treated the same way. And for the few times that the city will have to appear before the HPC, we will do that. Because there are times when the state of New Jersey might have to appear before an HPC or when, you know, the county might. But in very specific and unique, you know, circumstances. And so I just want to let the public know that this administration supports the HPC. We are not here to try to diminish the importance of the HPC, the districts, the grants that we will continue to pursue, and we remain committed to historic preservation and to the ten districts that are in the city, one of which I am happy to be a part of.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, um, Director Jackson and of course, uh, Councilor. Uh, Jen, Credidio, Divio, um, any more questions from my colleagues?
Yeah, I, I have questions. Well, first I'd like whoever isn't muted to mute. That would be helpful for everybody.
Uh, will you say that again?
I would like, somebody's not muted, so it, it just creates background. So I, you know, I'm, I'm not in favor of this, these changes. I think what you're describing and I, and I could sense the frustration from Director Jackson in some of the things that she has to deal with, you know, to, to deal with some of the development, uh, applications that go on. Um, I can, I can understand that. I've been to HPC meetings. I was on the planning board for eight years. I, I saw the frustration from people there and, and witnessed, you know, um, the divergence from, from the lane as, as you kind of referred to where they, they get outside their, their purview. Um, I've seen people on, you know, planning boards spend time asking if they're going to put vents in bathrooms. You know, that's all uniform construction code has nothing to do with the planning board to make sure there's vents in the apartment bathrooms or home bathrooms. Um, that's pretty typical. It's kind of bad training. It's kind of maybe bad leadership on, on some of the boards. Uh, that all can be corrected and adjusted. I don't think that, that, uh, that chopping it like this is necessary. And I also don't, I don't know that I'm fully comfortable and, and maybe, um, Ms. Credidio and I'm sorry, I know she went off screen, but I'm sure she's listening. Um, I, I'm kind of trying to figure out how, how, uh, the statute, um, and I have it written down here um, from, from doing my reading, the forty colon fifty-five D dash one eleven, how that does not apply, um, to all municipalities that have designated historic districts. And we have, I'm going to have to guess, we must have the most historic districts of any city in Plainfield or in, in New Jersey. And if, if not, we must be in the top two. Um, but how, how does that statute not correlate to, um, some of these changes?
Certainly, Councilman, I'd be pleased to answer that for you. Just as a, as a warning, my computer is dying. If, if I wind up, uh, being disconnected, I will reconnect momentarily from another device. With respect to one eleven, you know, we speak with respect to permits. Um, and those are permits where we are not before a, uh, planning or zoning board, right? One, section one-ten of the statute deals with referrals. Section one-eleven deals with permits. In either one of those instances, in the same way that the, uh, city is not subject to receiving a planning board approval or a zoning board approval, it is not subject to receiving HPC approval. It is not required to obtain any other, um, approval under the land use law from its own boards and commissions, right? The concept being that city decision should be made by the governing body, right? Um, and not by some subset of the city because obviously the city has, um, obligations, policies, um, and duties that it is, uh, seeking to implement for its residents far beyond one specific, uh, one specific focus. So the previous, I'm sorry, Councilman, you're muted.
Thank you. Sorry about that. Say that last part a, again, um, back up like two sentences regarding, you, you mentioned changes in governing body, et cetera.
So for example, if the governing, if the city of Plainfield would like to build a new municipal building, don't anyone think we're building a new municipal building? But if you wanted to build a new municipal building as an example, you're not required to get planning or zoning approval.
I, so I, I'll just save, save your battery time on that one. I, I happen to disagree that that should not be excluded. Um, I know that there's all kinds of arguments that, that they are, that cities are not obligated. Cities are, are run by residents and residents are on boards and, you know, cities should do as they say and not as they do. However, that's an argument for another day. I'm more, I'm more concerned with the other changes where if, if an applicant ultimately has to go before the planning board or the zoning board, then they don't need to appear before HPC. HPC can give some written recommendation. How is that not in conflict with, with that statute?
Actually, the language in, uh, ten, I'm sorry, seventeen, ten-four, Councilman, almost exactly tracks the language of the statute.
And that's seventeen, ten-four, what? No, I'm talking about forty, fifty-five D dash one eleven. Not, I know, I read.
I think you're actually in one-ten, Councilman, if you're, if you're referring to places where we are applying before the, the planning board or zoning board. But if you read the, if you read this latter part of seventeen, colon ten-four and the language of one-ten of the land use law, they're almost verbatim.
No, so what I'm, what I'm saying, cause you're, you're going back to the, the issue that if it's planning board, if it's going to go to the planning board for ultimate, uh, site plan approval, then it does not have to go to HPC. Um, if it is not going to one of those boards, then it has to go to HPC.
And, and I'm, I'm sorry, Councilman, let me, let me correct you, um, just or correct that statement. Their HPC still gets to weigh in on it. It's the, the core question is whether they have an individual approval right, which your previous ordinance granted them, right, which is not required, or whether they get to make recommendations to the planning board and the planning board is the one with the ultimate approval, right?
Well, okay, so that's, and that's an interesting, um, kind of way to, to parse it. So it may, it says permit and we have a, we also have a certificate of, um, appropriateness, is that, that's what it's called, right? Uh, certificate of appropriateness. Does the statute say your historic preservation commission cannot do that? Does it say it's completely against the law for them to have that right to do a certificate of appropriateness?
So let, let me clarify what our own ordinance, uh, says today. Our own ordinance says today that they recommend to the planning and zoning board. Our ordinance also says that after they get planning board and zoning board approval, uh, they have to go before HPC to get a certificate of appropriateness. And therein lies the conundrum because they are supposed to be recommending, they get a, a bite at the apple after the planning board or zoning board has made a decision. And so what this process does is put them in the advisory role and recommendation role uh, that the municipal land use law says. And so right now in our ordinance, they are required to recommend to the planning and zoning board, but they come back and get a CVA before permits are issued. That is the step that we would like to eliminate. We would like the planning board rec, resolution and the zoning board resolution to have all requirements in it for that particular applicant.
And so does that, that means that the HPC is providing their guidance or their opinion uh, based on seeing site plans and, uh, similar to what the fire department would do or PMUA used to do for sewer. They would. They would look at the plans, write up a memo and send it over to you and say, this is what we used to do.
Their historical consultant would be part of that same technical review committee, that fire, police, the engineer, everybody is looking at and understanding the site plan.
I, I think, I, I see where you're going with it, and, and I just have to say, I, I disagree with, with the approach. Having been on the planning board, planning board members are, are, are not well-versed in, 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 in the historical preservation, nor, nor have they ever needed to be, because that wasn't their bailiwick, that they, they, that wasn't their purview, as we are, keep going back to. And I, I think that, that taking, taking a sword when you just need a scalpel is, is a little unnecessary. I think that it's a process thing. I think there's maybe a management thing or, or a conversation, conversations that could be had that, that don't need to, to go to this extent. I don't think there's anything illegal about our, our code here, our ordinance. I think it's trying to be streamlined for the benefit of, of the city not having to go through some hoops. And I don't mean, I don't mean on city buildings, and I think it's also putting, giving more leverage to developers. As that young gentleman, Ian Fraser, said, that the resident that spoke earlier said, you know, you're, you're making residents jump through hoops and you're really not going to have developers jump through hoops. It's going to have a dog and pony show, but ultimately the planning board is just going to check the box. So because I think you have, at one point, we had two hundred, over two hundred people on here, right around two hundred people, not panelists, just attendees.
Exactly.
I think there's a lot of confusion. I think there's a lot of, a lack of thought about whether or not we would lose any kind of certification that is the box we check when the, when the Department of Economic Development submits those applications. And I, I make a motion that we table this, this ordinance until conversations can be had that includes some of the HPC members.
And, uh, Council President.
I have a motion, actually.
There's a motion on the floor.
Second.
All in favor?
Yeah, let's take a roll call.
Can I have a roll call, Mr. Clerk, for this motion that Councilman McKenna put on the floor?
Roll call, motion to table, second by, Davis, Councilmember Brooks Jones.
No.
Dave.
Yes.
Akadai.
No.
Kana.
Yes.
Mills Ransom.
Ms. Mills Ransom, we didn't hear you, Councilwoman.
You.
Sorry, I was muted, but it's no.
Vice President.
No.
President.
No.
It's two in favor and five opposed, motion to table fails.
With that being said, I like.
I make a motion that we accept this.
Second.
All, well, I, and I need a roll call for this, for this ordinance, yes. Go ahead, Mr. Clerk.
This ordinance on first reading, MC twenty-two-two-three-five, Councilmember Bridge Jones.
Yes.
Davis.
No.
Akadai.
Yes.
Kana.
No.
Mills Ransom.
Yes.
Vice President McCray.
Yes.
Council President Good.
Yes.
Favor to oppose ordinance adopted in first reading.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. I appreciate you on this evening, and now we're going to move to general comments. A total of sixty minutes has been allocated for all public comments to be presented here on this evening. Let me just add that each speaker will be allotted five minutes. If you wish to be heard, please hit the hand icon to be recognized, and you will be unmuted. Once you have been unmuted, please give your name and address for the record. Each speaker again will be given five minutes. The floor is now open. Holly A., your name and address for the record, please.
Holly Algejo, one-sixty-three White Birch Road, Edison, New Jersey.
Good evening.
Evening. I'm a member of Grace Episcopal Church. With regard to the decision on the HPC, the certificate of appropriateness belongs in the hands of the HPC solely, not the economic developer or any other body in the city administration or otherwise. This is about landmarks, not homeowner properties and districts. If you leave the Historic Preservation Commission in existence without powers or authority, you are in effect tying the hands of every citizen of the city of Plainfield, because they would not have recourse to go to the state to fight you as a council in regards to decisions you may make on any historical property. I know many people think that this is about what will affect them as homeowners, but it is not. We all know what's on the table here are the open spaces around churches and the churches themselves. These properties are highly desirable to, because developers see this open land as much cheaper than having to repurpose a building. Contrary to what the mayor is saying, we know, but this is, that this is about the, giving the council powers which they have no business having in light of the laws that were passed by state and national government to protect historic properties. You are taking that power away from citizens by keeping it in effect while you are ignoring, I have my words messed up here. I will say that what the mayor is saying, it is not, that is what it exactly is. Watch what they do. Don't listen to what they say. And I, I can't say ask you to vote it down. It's too late. The HPC is the one with the expertise, not you. How dare you take their powers away? How dare you cripple them so that even a citizen has no recourse?
Thank you. Uh, CB, um, your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, Cheryl Bullock, ten-sixty Central Avenue.
Good evening, Ms. Bullock.
When I first moved here in nineteen-eighty, that's one of the reasons we moved here, because of the beautiful historic districts and that people were preserving their homes. Not everybody knew what the rules were going to be, and thank goodness we have created a beautiful historic district, ten of them, and had a historic commission to help people with the rules and regulations. Or if not, we would have so many houses vinyl-sided or torn down or kept to be for families, like some of them, single-family houses were turned into. Unfortunately, I don't know why the city of Plainfield has not expanded the historic district. They've been working on it for several years, and for some reason it gets, keeps getting put off to, off the agenda. And one of the reasons I was told it was put off the agenda is because there's a double-wide mobile home going in next door to me, and it was, seemed to be that they didn't want to expand it down Central Avenue, because they are putting a home up that was not supposed to be put up, and lawyers are working on it right now still, because they shouldn't have put the, a house on that property at all. So not only to preserve our beautiful historic building, but to preserve the, the homes. And, you know, some people try to do things they shouldn't do with historic districts, and it seems to be developers want to come in here and tear everything down to build, I don't know what I want to call it, Sears, they want to go through a catalog and, and they're putting up the same apartments with no character. You know, you go all over Plainfield and the apartments are flat. They're ugly. They have no architecture to them. Developers make promises. There was supposed to be a rooftop garden on top of the one on Front Street. There was supposed to be an elevator that wasn't put in. The Teppers building was supposed to have a basement used for seniors or recreation. That never happened. It turned into be full of mul- mold and mildew and never corrected for people to use. The side of that building was never corrected like it was supposed to. I could go on and on. Where developers have made promises to do things, and the city has not upheld those developers' promises. Even behind Decray School, there was supposed to be things done for Decray when they sold it to the developer, and it got sold over three times. So the original plan was never made to come to fruition because of that. And, and Tep and Decray never even got the rest of their money from the bomb because of, of things not being done properly. And it's just a shame that people from out of town who come here to work at City of Plainfield don't seem to appreciate the historic beauty of what we have here. We have tree-lined streets. We have, you know, beautiful, beautiful, you know, areas here that are, are appreciated. The, the other concern I have when I was on beautification, we had rules downtown Plainfield. We had flower pots. We had money put in the historic beautification fund that Barbara Sanford, a ma- matter of fact, started with, with and got me involved in. I don't know why the flower planter pots, there was budget money years ago for that. They're not there. PSENG hasn't been forced to turn on the, the beautiful lights that are downtown. People have been getting hurt because the lights aren't turned on, especially at Park Madison area. There was a gentleman beat up the other night in the street. When I was driving through, I had to stop and call the police because he was getting beaten up. The streets are filthy. The sidewalks are falling apart. They were supposed to be power washed and then the gum, bubble gum taken off of them. That hasn't been done. The, the banners for spring, summer, winter, fall haven't been put up and kept up. They seem to let people put flashy lights and use their windows as storage units instead of displays like they're supposed to be. We used to have classes for store owners. The Sid, the Sid, the city took over the Sid, but the city doesn't seem to be managing the downtown district. And you want to put all these apartments here because you think everybody's going to ride their bicycle downtown to shop? But it's just not conducive for that right now. It doesn't look appealing. It looks dirty. Our downtown Plainfield is dirty, you know, and it's part of the historic area. It's, some of the architecture in those buildings are just drop-dead gorgeous, and they're not being maintained, you know? So I would like to see some of that, you know, addressed, definitely addressed.
Thank you. We appreciate your comments.
I'm also concerned that you guys have got your mind made up before this meeting, and I wish that we would have live council meetings again, so we could actually look you in the eye and so you could feel that when people are upset or when they're happy about something you're doing, you know, both ways. Um, I think it's time to bring back the meetings to in-person, so, because I'm disturbed that you guys have got your mind made up, as the song goes before, and really don't care what we think, and that, that's another disturbing thought.
Um, I wouldn't say that we don't care, because we do, but, um, uh, you can look forward to, uh, in-person very soon. Thank you so much. Owner, your name and address for the record, please. Uh, you're muted.
I don't know why I should say owner. My name is John DiMarco. I live at nine-forty Glenwood Avenue in Plainfield, New Jersey.
Well, John DiMarco, it does says owner, O-W-N-E-R, but that's okay. Good evening.
I, I wish I was the owner of Plainfield.
Good evening.
Uh, it would be changed. Anyway, I, I just think that this whole thing is, is a farce, and I think that it's another nail in the coffin of Plainfield, just like when they took down Muhlenberg and put in those apartments. It's just not what it's supposed to be, not what it was like, and I saw lots of houses here. People come here for the beauty of the older houses and wonderful things, and they're not here to see apartment buildings. They're leaving the city because they don't want to see that. It's just an awful thing, and I don't need five minutes. I just have to say to the five of you that voted for this, shame on you. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. LaClair, good evening. Your name again and the address, please, for the record. You're muted, sir. You're on mute. You are still on mute. Uh, IT, but what is the, what is, is he pushing to unmute himself if he's on a?
I sent a request for him to unmute. I'll go ahead to someone else and see, and come back and see if he has.
Please. Thank you so much. Make sure we come back to him. And who's next?
Michelle J., but I have to promote that person as a panelist due to the fact that they're using an older version of Sue.
Okay.
So hold on a moment.
Thank you so much. Michelle J., your name and address for the record.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, I can. I can see you too. Good evening.
Oh, my goodness, Jesus, Lord. My name is Michelle Jenkins, three-fifty-six Emerson Avenue, of course, and it's great. Um, I'm going to say it used to be great city of Plainfield. The Queen City is losing her shine on her crown. It's being overdeveloped with all these apartment buildings. It's taken forever to get from one side of town to the other. But one of my main concerns right now, I have a husband who'll soon be ninety-nine years young. I have been trying for two years to get a handicap sign in front of my house. I have been told, oh, you have a driveway. My husband has served this community, his family, for ninety-five years. Um, yeah, we have a driveway, but tried being ninety-nine, walking down the, down the front, across the front, and then up into the driveway. Besides almost being ninety-nine, he has congestive heart failure. He's blind, and he's had a traumatic fall down the steps. He has to go out the house constantly to go to physical therapy. I have to push this wheelchair or walker, and you're going to tell me someone who's almost a century years old can't get a handicap sign in front of our house? It is really come to the point, I have to pull my car on top of my lawn. We live on a street with two school systems. The traffic is horrendous, and I think it's unfair. Because when it comes to it, y'all can change ordinance and stuff to suit you to fit the city for what y'all need, and I think it's unfair for us to struggle. And how fitting that we joined this meeting today when you're talking about ADA, American Disabilities Act, and you act like you care about people with disabilities. It's totally unfair that we have to go through this. And first, it took two years for me to get an answer. Two years, I had been contacting the City of Plainfield Police Department. It took two years for me to get an answer.
And the mayor's.
And that's in the mayor's office. That's totally unacceptable to get an answer two years later. That's ridiculous. But you can get people signs because they, you can get them a whole street for music. You can get, and I'm not downgrading parliament funkadelics or anything like that. But this is a man with a disability, and he can't get a sign to get out of his house, who still wants to go to work every day, who still wants to go to physical therapy? We better hope we live to be almost a century and can still get up and leave our houses every day. And we need to get this city together and bring back the beautiful Queen City that we once used to have. When I leave this city and ride around and look at the beautiful homes, it hurts my heart and my gut that this city is become, it's like a Brooklyn. A building here, a building there, a building here, a building there. It's not the Queen City that we were noted for. Thank you. God bless you. You all have a good night. And I feel like the other lady. Y'all minds are made up when you come to this meeting. You don't see us in person anymore, and we wonder if you really care about us, the people of this community, because I've reached out to many of you about my situation myself, and all we get is nothing. I'm still pushing this wheelchair out this house, walking walkers down this step, pulling my car on top of my lawn. Y'all minds are made up before you come to this meeting. So how much do y'all care about us after y'all get our votes? Thank you and have a good night.
Thank you. Mr. Michaels, your name and address for the record, please.
Yes, thank you. Once, once again, William Michelson, five-fifty-six Belvedere Avenue.
Good evening again.
Thank you. Chairman of the Historic Preservation Commission. I'm going to be brief, because these are second reading issues. The one about buying the old YMCA property. My head is still ringing from hearing the mayor say about an hour ago that the plan for this property had turned into something different. I don't see him on my screen right now, but, Mr. Mayor, are you telling me that the project that we spent all that time on, that created practically a perfect jewel to be the crown of a revived downtown in exactly the best location to do that, is now going to be thrown out the window and is going to be turned into a playground instead? Please think about this in the next two weeks. Please think about this in the next two weeks. On the um comments that the, what's her name, Ms. Curdito or something said, um, I've never heard of her, which is interesting because if she's going to have opinions about historic preservation in this town, you'd think she would have come to me first. The reason that we have some things in the ordinance that look to her a bit excessive, for instance, that the city itself should have to come and get ACA from us when it builds things in the historic district is absolutely intentional, it happened twenty five years ago. I was chairman of the, vice chairman of the planning board and I was the chairhead for both master plan and zoning revision. And this was on purpose and we had a lot of public speaking to us at the time about all the efforts uh, that they would like to see. Now I'm being told, oh, this doesn't comply with the statute, we don't need to do that. Well, there's something that's being overlooked very seriously and that is the requirement that our legislation and our administration be consistent with our master plan. The nineteen ninety eight master plan, which was the one I'm referring to, lay the groundwork for all this. When we did a new master plan a couple of years ago, my element, the historic preservation element was actually the first one finished. And it's pretty darn close to the nineteen ninety eight element. Now I know, Director Jackson, why every time I note to people that it's, our element was somehow omitted and not attached to the overall master plan when the planning board adopted it. I'm told repeatedly, oh, yeah, we overlooked it, we'll get it done. I've talked to you about it, I've talked to Mister Scott Bay about it, I've now I know why, you don't want the historic preservation element in the master plan so that you can do projects like this that are not consistent with the principles of the master plan. Where is this going? Well, the State Historic Preservation Office has already been advised and I had nothing to do with that about this proposal. I am afraid we are in serious trouble, not only of losing our CLG status but of having our, some chunks of our zoning invalidated, if somebody takes one of these matters to court. You've got to step back, finish the master plan with the ordinance, with element that we inserted and then maybe consider what kind of reforms are appropriate because they've got to be consistent. I am ashamed of you. Thank you.
Thank you. Stephen Warren, your name and address for the record, please.
Name is Major Stephen Warren from the Salvation Army, six fifteen One Chung Avenue. I'm the business administrator for the Salvation Army across the great state of New Jersey. Uh, commenting in regards to ordinance MC twenty twenty two dash twenty nine. And also subsequent comments that were made in regards to other ordinances in comparison to other properties. I just want to submit for the council and especially for you, Council President, as well as uh, the corporate council and Mayor Matt that mentioned that uh, we have gone down a path where we have rejected the offer and I would just categorically say that that is untrue. The letter before all of those agencies is that we're just asking for more time to complete two other certified appraisals. Our intent is that we would verify the offer that is being presented by the city. That we would confirm that one appraisal that is there with two other appraisals. And that offer would also be at no cost to the city. In exchange, we're just asking for a little bit more time. We understand that a corporate council has brought up that it has been a long decision and a long discussion. We admit that, we understand that, we're just asking for a little bit more time to complete those resolutions. That way we can confirm the offer that is there and continue down this partnership that we've enjoyed with the city of Plainfield for a long time. With that, I yield the rest of my time, thank you so much for having me, inviting me and listening.
Thank you so much, Mister Warren, have a good night. Ian Frazier, good evening, your name and address for the record, please, good evening.
Good evening, Ian Frazier, seven forty seven Dixie Lane, um, my statement regarding MC twenty twenty two thirty five uh, section P seventeen ten dash four was not concerning homeowners. My concern is that a recommendation is a recommendation, not a decision. This clearly benefits developers who go before planning and zoning first. The HPC should be making decisions regarding matters pertaining to them. Also, the city clearly selectively enforces the HPC's rules. There has not been a single action or resolution regarding the removal of protected Tiffany stained glass windows at Grace Church. Almost a year has passed since the outstanding violations were discovered. Additionally, the HPC's powers should be increased to include interior spaces of high architectural merit like the New York City Landmarks Commission does. As a voter, this decision has cost the map administration my vote in the next primary for mayor, it doesn't end here, thank you.
Thank you, Mister Frazier, good evening. Jen LJ, good evening, your name and address for the record, please.
Yes, thank you, um, my name is Jan Jasper, I live at eight two eight Arlington Avenue. And I am uh, recently I've become a former member of the HPC. I I served on the council for maybe something like six years. And I have a couple of specific points about about the discussion. I understand that uh, one part of this proposed change would eliminate informational meetings. And one of the speakers a little while ago said that uh, sometimes the HPC's informational meetings uh, verged into topics that were really more a matter for planning, like talking about parking. Um, I can't say that that has never happened, perhaps it did, but I want to stress that in my years as a commissioner that property owners often found it very helpful to have these informational meetings. And I think that it's a confusing process often for them to navigate and and they seem to find the informational meetings very helpful, I think it saves time for everyone. Uh, one more point, um, that as I recall, and I highly doubt that this has changed. The HPC did meet monthly, not quarterly, and they did take verbatim minutes, I remember, remember that distinctly. Has it changed in the three years since I stepped away? I kind of doubt it, Mister Michelson could answer that for you, but uh, thank you for letting me speak and that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you, we appreciate your comment, have a good evening. Gary S, your name and address for the record, please, good evening.
Good evening, thank you again, Gary Schneider, eight two five Carlton Avenue. There's a thing out there called common sense and that this council clearly doesn't have. You've heard over two hundred, there was over two hundred people from all over talking about the HPC, talking about the YMCA, talking about many different matters that matter to the people that you supposedly represent. And yet you vote directly against those recommendations from the people on that. People that speak that said, you know, it's predetermined, you guys made up your mind before you even heard everything. In my mind, it's a hundred percent correct and what Zoom allows you to do and and that in the HPC, we don't do this, there are so much, uh, watching this over the, during the night. You you see maybe right now we have ten, sometimes it's twelve, thirteen, fourteen, sometimes it went down to six. Whether people go off video, go off mic and you do this backdoor politics without being present and this was a live meeting, wouldn't be able, like face to face, you wouldn't be able to do it. So there's so much conversation going on in the background that you're not even hearing the people that voted you in. All right, what's going to happen? And again, I'm in real estate, here's what's going to happen. You passed this bill for the HPC that allows the planning board to put in in the developer to knock down a house or have an open land and the developer can go in and build that land property up. HPC has no right to say anything according to what you're going to vote. All right, so forget about the homeowner that lives next door, across the street, but behind them. When you build a three story apartment building in a historical district, those people that live in that district will leave. All right, you're going to devalue the historical district, you're decentralizing the historical body. The ten districts that you have will fall apart and you're going to have people running out of this town. You're creating a Newark area. And if you don't think so, look what's going on when you're building these apartments on South Avenue, across from Dairy Queen. All right, I remember when that went up and I had conversations with the Estad about it and the concern was about the people parking. And there there was going to be the parking underneath the building and plenty of parking inside. Go down that street right now, they're from corner to corner parking that's going down there. And consciously, I don't, and and I'm watching you guys and I wish it was face to face, I'm watching you on it. There's no conscience about what you're voting on, that you actually do care on what's going on in this town. Because you're obviously showing you don't care at all, at all. And you have map, Mayor Map coming on wanting to do a project by the YMCA, think if this was your money. Okay, that you were laying out five point two million dollars for a building that you have zero idea on how much it's going to renovate for. That building is destroyed, it's going to cost minimum six million, ten million dollars to restore that building to any level. At all, and you're you're willing to put up our money, five point two million when Map himself and Jackson herself say we don't have an idea what we're going to do with it. Yet, let's spend five point two million so we can play around with something and maybe the town will appreciate it and you don't even have any opinion from the town at all, let's buy it. Let's think about it, let's get a town opinion and then maybe then we can do something about it. All right, how long does it take to buy the building that you're bailing out a developer? If this developer could get a better price, don't you think he would sell it? He can't, so he's getting a price for like, maybe three point two million, I'm in commercial, tops. Maybe three point two million that he could get for it. So you get a golden goose coming along from the, from the town says, we'll give you, we had it appraised for five point two million. So we're going to give you five point two million. I can guarantee you, this developer couldn't get even close to that amount of money. And yet you're spending my money, our money on something you have no clue, zero clue on what you're going to do with this building or how much it's going to cost. I don't know how you can sleep at night, I don't know, every one of them that voted for this against the HPC and voted for the YMCA. Okay, I can, there will be a lot of people that's going to say, you're not going to make the next election. And tell you the truth, I wouldn't vote for you, I wouldn't vote for map, anything on it or anything else, you're destroying this city. Destroying it.
President, the speaker's time is up and there is approximately five minutes left of comments.
Thank you, Gary, appreciate your comments, have a good night. Mister Scruggs, good evening, sir, how are you, your name and address for the record, please.
Yeah, uh, my name is James Scruggs, I'm at one twenty five Lafayette Place. Um, I am here uh, representing my block and at least two other homeowners on this block. Um, thank you for your service and it's got to be a tough night for y'all. I feel like right now, it's like Charlie Brown, y'all are hearing me say, wah wah.
Wow, wah wah wah, no, it's not like that, Mister Scruggs.
Anyway, two reasons why I'm here, one is this is the fourth time I'm coming here to talk about no parking from here to the corner. On the corner of my street on Lafayette Place are um, two large commercial vans that park on the corner. Which makes it impossible to see out the street. This is the fourth time I'm coming here and 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 every time I mention it, or at least the last two times I mentioned it. I got um, people uh, who said that they were going to move ahead with it, I understand that things take time, I'm here again talking about it.
Mister Scruggs, normally I would not jump in while someone is speaking, but I need you to reach out to me when this happens. Please.
And the other thing that I, the other reason why I'm calling is because I have neighbors who are taking up much too much space. In that um, I live on a dead end street and I I have neighbors who have decided that this is a nightclub block and on most weekends, there's more than one party going on. I can hear the music inside my house with the TV on, I can't even hear the television. You gave me Director Abney, Director Dabney's number, uh, and the the secret message to call when I call the police and tell them to ask for the watch commander.
Watch commander, yes.
Yeah, when I asked for the watch commander, the person who answered the phone said that they were the one who can handle the dispatch, I don't know how things work, but anyway.
But I need you, I need, I need you to call me, Mister Scruggs, would you please do that?
Sometimes when I call, I get a response, um, but just two things I want to talk about. On Ju- July third, uh, my neighbors decided to have fireworks in the middle of the street, I live in a wooden house. The fireworks were coming up over my hair, house landing on my roof. Uh, my husband came out with a, with a hose and a hose down the fireworks. Our neighbors were a little hostile, you know, the other thing is there's, there's one, two and three parties sometimes, last week, there were three parties, I called the police, they came. And as soon as they got to the block, the party was shut down, it was quiet and people were quiet, they were whooping and yelling. But as soon as the police arrived, it got silent, so whoever's giving these parties knows that this is illegal and it's, it's um, it's unfair. I'm living in, I used to work at the Copa Gavanna and I feel like I'm living there now. It is not fun, my neighbors are holding me hostage, I don't think it's fair. I've been in touch with at least two other members of my, people on my block and we're all in accord that what's happening is really unfair. And I know you've been listening for three, almost four hours of people. And I am almost sure, you know, if you ask, what did James Scruggs say, y'all are going to say, he said wah wah wah.
No, 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 that's not true, that's not true.
If you could just let me know who I can call about the no parking here to corner and what can I do when my neighbors are being abusive, you know, if I'm inside my house and I can't hear my television because the music is so loud from a house four houses down. That, that's got to be illegal, you know, I'm not trying to be the Grinch who stole parties. But uh, I just want to live here, I'm a homeowner, I'm a taxpayer, my taxes are paid, you know. Uh, anyway, wah wah.
No, that's not true, Mister Scruggs. Let's talk.
Well, I just wanted some of y'all to smile, that's all.
We will talk soon.
Been a long night for y'all, I know.
We will talk soon, we will talk.
Thank you, but I I I, I'm I'm very serious, I need help. Someone, please help me, I don't like being in my house held hostage and not be able to hear my own television.
Thank you.
For your service.
Thank you.
Wah wah.
Don't do that, don't do that. Who's next, please?
Mr. President, we've exceeded the time for public comments.
I will take uh, Gloria's iPad as the last call if uh, if that's okay.
Senator, I make a motion that we extend public comment by at least twenty minutes, we still have nineteen hands up. And we extended it the first time and you said to the public to wait to the end of the meeting. And we still have nineteen residents who still want to speak and these are not all, these are not residents repeating themselves, these are brand new residents.
Well, I I I will do that, Councilwoman Davis, because I, you're right, I did ask them to hold on to line.
Actually, you can't do that, but I'll second her motion, then we do that.
Well, uh, Councilman McKenna, I was about to go forward with that, thank you though, I appreciate you.
Hello, Gloria Vinkowski.
Just one sec, just one second, Gloria, um, it's been moved in second, uh, all in favor?
Hi.
Uh, any posts, any abstaining, motion carries, Gloria, go right ahead.
Yes, hello, everyone, everyone who's still awake. Uh, the ones that I really saw that were awake the whole time were uh, Councilman McKenna and Councilwoman Davis. Thank you, good public servants.
Gloria, I I show you, I was, I was wide awake, yeah.
No, I I didn't think you were, I thought your eyes were closed, but here's the thing, gee, you know, I wish, I see, a lot of different points on a, a lot of different items. I wish I had gotten on, gotten in on the uh, ground floor of that YMCA deal and paid a million and now got, would have gotten paid five million. Um, and I am so sorry about the Salvation Army, what a raw deal they are getting, you know, um, Ms. Davis, you are right. And people, the, the city uses COVID as an excuse all the time, so why not you? So why not use COVID as a reason for uh, the negotiations not having taken place? And I see your smiling faces and uh, most of you, and I don't really believe that you're listening. I also want to say that um, Mayor MAP used the word misinformation, but let me tell you, misinformation comes from a lot of different uh, a lot of different people, including the government. And think back, maybe some of you are too young, to the credibility gap in the seventies. I think that certainly exists in Plainfield. And I have to say, I I really applaud the intelligent, uh, knowledgeable people who called in about saving the Plainfield Historic uh, group. They're right on, they're right on. And um, but other things. So yes, okay, so you council people. Really, most of you should take a look in the mirror and see whether you think you really should be doing this job. Because I don't think you're doing a good job. And you know, we do see signs that there are books and movies about hidden figures. Of course, they're talking about minorities and women who were involved in the space program who are very valuable. But just changing that a little bit uh, to a different kind of figure like the dollar. It would be wonderful to have a documentary about Plainfield, about hidden figures and also hidden agendas. Because really, there are a lot. And I would say, I don't live in a historic district in Plainfield. I live close to to one. And I love Plainfield. And I would say as the historic districts go, so go Plainfield, so goes Plainfield. So if you like Plainfield, if you love Plainfield, do something for the historic districts. I don't know what your agendas are, most of you, but they're not good. And I guess I could say have a pleasant evening like you people do, most of you. But I don't know that you really mean it, do you? Anyway, good night.
Mr. Jenkins, good evening, sir. Can I have your name and address for the record?
Yes, once again, guys, this is Andrew Jenkins from three oh two West H Street. Um, I hope you can remember my name because I think in the future, um, I'm going to have to do something. Uh, I would like to thank um, Mrs. Davis and Mr. McKenna. Um, I am a person of uh, my, my father was in politics in New York. And what I have seen tonight is really, it's really not good. Uh, only two people generally spoke up for the community. Um, I'm really disappointed that you guys are taking properties under a name. You're going to make it public so then you can skip the HPC. Okay, that's what's really going on. You won't need them to be the safeguard for the community because the land will be public. Um, it's really a shame. Uh, I'm sad to see it. Uh, again, Ms. Davis and Mr. McKenna, thank you for at least trying. Right, I wish some more of the council would at least hear my voice. And say that this is not good. Putting up a a five hundred unit apartment building in a historic district or around other people's houses. Where those car, where, think about it, where are those cars going to go? Are they by your houses? Or do you live in these, in in these areas where these apartment buildings are going? Are you going to be impacted by the traffic that's going to be? A five hundred unit, you're not, you're not even thinking about it. Five hundred units, if even half of them drive, that's two hundred and fifty more cars in the neighborhood. And nobody's thinking about that. And and it's, you know, you guys are just not, you 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 go into Jersey City, you can't park. If you do park, your car's getting scratched because the the people can't get through. Because, because of the density. And I think, I I really do wish that, um, I understand that you have to build up, right? You have to bring in new, because you need revenue for the city. Right, I I understand it, I get it. But we have to do this right and it's not right. This is not right. There's like other people are saying, and I'm sorry if I'm like venting because I am. Um, there's, there's a lot of apartment buildings going up really quick. I know there's probably plans for a couple more. You're adding more traffic, you're not thinking about parking. Right, these buildings are not having parking lots underneath them, on the roof, whatever. Those are not, the the plan is to put up a building. And that's it. So again. Uh, once again, I would just like to thank the other city council members that at least spoke for us and questioned what was going on. Um, and you guys have a good night.
Thank you so much. Ms. Anderson, good evening. Your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening, this is Leslie Anderson. I live at one thirty-six Reeve Terrace. I am calling to discuss municipal ordinance twenty twenty-two dash thirty-four. I am excited about the potential for a community facility in the city. I grew up in Plainfield. I was able to go to camp for free. I was able to swim in pools for free. Uh, the pools were supported by the city. The camps were supported by nonprofit organizations. I think I had a great start growing up here. However, I would like to suggest a couple of covenants be added to this resolution. First, what should be added is that because of the uh, costs, which I think could have been lower. And I'm using my uh, twenty-five plus years experience in redevelopment. While I don't believe it was a failed development, I believe that the project probably wasn't moving forward. And the developer is realizing a windfall uh, by getting well over his or her purchase price for the property. When the project was not moving forward at the current time, and if it was moving forward, you would not have been able to purchase the property from him. Nonetheless, my suggestion is that covenants be added to this uh, ordinance that require that it remain a community facility. I heard the mayor loud and clear that there would be absolutely no residential, commercial, or the site would not be mixed use. And I believe that the way to ensure that happens is to codify the language in the ordinance. So when it comes up for a second reading, I implore you to add that language. And I also ask that you add language that requires a ballot question from the residents. If the project is not allowed to move forward and you have to change it. Actions speak louder than words. And while I'm not a fan of personal attacks, I do not think they're necessary. Thirty years ago, I was a member of the administration and I know how it feels to work very hard to put forth policy and programs to have personal attacks. I do not agree with that. However, we need some assurances as the residents of this city that if we're taking five million dollars to purchase this property, that we will in fact ensure that it becomes a facility that benefits all residents of the city of Plainfield. And that ends my comments. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson. We appreciate your comments. Have a good night. Vince Gay, your name and address for the record, please.
Yes, I'm Vince Gay. I live in Cincinnati, Ohio, where my son receives medical care. I'm formerly of Plainfield. And I think it'll be pretty obvious that my uh, comments very much align with those of current Plainfield residents, the many current feet Plainfield residents you've heard from tonight. Um, the YMCA still stands because of what uh, Ms. Jackson and uh, the mayor like to dismiss as misinformation or lies or hysteria. And uh, what most people would call people being genuinely concerned about the truth of the situation. And understanding that if they don't make some noise, the YMCA will be gone. That's going on with other structures now. It'll go on with other structures in the future. Um, nobody has suggested that the HPC amendments are solely about Grace Church. But it strains credulity to suggest that grace isn't a big factor in the HPC amendments. Uh, preservation and development don't have to compete. Nothing has shown that preservation of grace or any other building has to lose in order for development to win. And nothing is shown by the way that grace poses a threat of negative impact on surrounding areas or the destruction of grace is the only way to best preserve the public interest. Nonetheless, the need of redevelopment study, something somebody doesn't request unless they want to take drastic actions on a property. The resolution for that passed the city council with flying colors. Um, that may be a first, by the way, for a church in the city. I hope it's not the first of many. But uh, since then, HPC has discussed for the first time in a long time its current ability to disapprove demolitions. And the planning board has rejected that you need a re- redevelopment study saying uh, so saying that this has uh, nothing to do with grace is just a bit much, at twenty-four hours after the planning board rejected that study. Um, these went on the agenda. And by the way, wouldn't it be nice if agendas went up much, much earlier um, for the city? Um, one thing is people, more people would be aware that this is not the end for the HPC issue. This will be before the council for a second reading. So folks, uh, keep making the kind of noise that saved the YMCA. Um, I actually heard somebody at that planning meeting say that, well, we're here for developers. We're here, we're here to smooth things for developers. Not one word about what was right for the city. The city is already routinely bypassing zoning processes meant to serve the residents of Plainfield. And now the city wants to bypass historic preservation processes that serve all of the people of Plainfield. You say, some of you say that you support historic uh, preservation, but it seems you support it only until it begins ever so slightly inconvenience developers. Decide what's important to you. Decide who you work for. That should be the people of the city of Plainfield. Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate your comments. Uh, Mary Burwinkle, good evening. Your name and address again for the record, please.
Hi, everybody. I'll be short. Mary Burwinkle, seventeen eighty-five Sleepy Hollow Lane. And I would like to say, of course, I'm disappointed at the vote tonight and I I I'm disappointed but not surprised because I know that 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 most of you just vote whatever the mayor tells you to vote. So like, you know, good for you and I hope that works out for you in the future. Um, the next, the next thing I would like to say is that I love Andrew Jenkins and I don't know him. But I have to say that I'm going to call him and I'm going to figure out how to get Andrew Jenkins um, on a team, on an election team here because I thought he was very eloquent tonight. The next thing I'm going to say is that I am a retired attorney. So I'm seven, almost seventy-two years old and I'm a retired attorney and um, as a result, I can't practice law. But um, but and I call myself a recovering attorney, but I can still read. And when I read that that the New Jersey land use stuff that 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 the lawyer that Ms. Jackson brought up totally dissed. I think it says that if you have a city and you have um, and you have historic districts you've designated that you have to have a historic preservation commission that that looks at permits. I mean, I I don't think this is optional. I don't know why anybody thinks it's optional. I I I really think this is um, something that that the city is going to have to look at or be subject of litigation on. Um, I think Sherri Bullock was right that um, it was a lot easier when people were in person and there were a hundred ninety-five people staring you in the face and yelling at you to get you to, to get you to change your vote. Um, so I understand that completely. And tongue in cheek, I'm going to say that I heard Gloria Vinkowski say that she wished she bought the Y a long time ago. So do I. I mean, this is like ridiculous. We're buying the Y for like a huge amount more money than we had to buy it for. So and and with with no plan, no estimate for how you're going to retrofit it. And if, and if the real Y would have retrofitted if they could have afforded that. If you guys ever thought about that, this is ridiculous. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Cooper, your name and address for the record, please.
I'm Sekita Cooper, post office box, Plainfield, New Jersey. Um, I just want to say, and this is not a stab at Public Works at all, want to make that clear. But there are parking meters that are inoperable downtown. And um, there are the old ones that I've noticed on Watch Young Avenue. And some of them are not working, so just wanted to know, maybe, you know, maybe somebody forgot about them. I don't know. Uh, just pointing that out. I want to thank Councilman Sean McKenna and the clerk for explaining and giving a roadmap as to how the meetings would and should flow. Let the record reflect that on the June thirtieth special meeting. This is exactly what I was attempting to convey when I was rudely and abruptly cut off by the board council, who knows me? After being acknowledged by Councilman Barry Good. Yet he addressed me as if I had defamed or ridiculed those of you on the dais. There is a way to address people as has been eloquently displayed in this meeting. The council's representation during the last meeting was an embarrassment to the city and didn't help to foster the relationship that we're looking to grow. It makes me wonder who is really in charge of the meeting. It was very off putting and was not necessary. It was almost as if he had a chip on his shoulder. Yet we have never had negative history prior. I truly appreciate the explanations of some of the ordinances and hearing the thought behind them. It was actually refreshing to hear tonight. Tonight, we have spoken in depth about redevelopment within the city. And as I am a real estate broker who brings business to the city. I am all for the growth. Yet I have not heard anything in this past year or prior pertaining to the expansion, growth, and the hiring of inspectors to assist with the management of the enforcement with the residential and commercial properties that already exist. Could you consider when you're doing these redevelopment contracts to add back the revenue for the school systems? Some of the properties that have been purchased and zoned for redevelopment. The tax portion that was a part of that, that the city was getting revenue for. Some of that money went to the school district. It's now been taken and not replaced. As Cheryl Bullock mentioned and others, we want in-person meetings and it would be great to see some of you. It is nice to see the passion of those that live in the doors, in in the historic districts. And they have displayed great passion tonight. I truly wish that those in other wards, specifically the fourth ward, had the same passion. The city has done robocalls about events happening in the past. Why can't we get one for the council meetings? Additionally, the numbers you use for announcements keeps changing. It makes it confusing. Can we add an announcement for future meetings to the Facebook page and stream? During COVID, the mayor went live and streamed. Why not these meetings? Perhaps we can add a short video or three minutes or such prior to the start of the meeting describing how things will go to aid in assisting those who are not familiar. This, of course, can also be added to the website and would make it appear that you want to hear from your taxpayers, residents, seniors, et cetera. I want to thank Director Dabney for doing the traffic studies. May I ask, if you don't already have this on your list, to please reconsider looking at the traffic on Rock Avenue and Myrtle where the two schools are present? Lastly, thank you for allowing me to speak without the arrogance I was met with at the last meeting. My intent has always been to see a better way for my city, the patrons, residents, and taxpayers. I am looking forward to a changing of the guards come January. Fresh folks, fresh ideas, new voices. Thank you to the directors on this call. You are always polite and approachable and hear me. I may be one, but I represent many. Some of the council members might want to take note of that. And with that, good night.
Uh, Elizabeth Ferrone, Ferroni, uh, your name and address again for the record, please.
Right, Elizabeth Ferroni, three twenty West Thirty-Eighth Street, Manhattan. Um, you know, Plainfield. Uh, is really like my home. I grew up there and then I recently lived there. For fourteen years and I was forced to come to New York because. I am a survivor of hepatitis C. I was infected with it when I was in Asia in nineteen eighty-seven. When a medical doctor gave me acupuncture with a reused needle that was only sterilized in alcohol. And my health has been devastated by it. The last three months, I've been trying to save Grace Church from demolition. Because it's being sold to a developer who needs to demolish it for a hundred and seventy-five apartments. And of course, my health is plummeting. Because I've been forced to deal with abuse. The last, the planning board. Meeting was so abusive. I'm not used to this kind of abuse. You know, I came from a family that was very kind. And I, when I come in contact with this abuse, it just, uh, it destroys me. Um, but I wanna save this church. And the importance of having a historic preservation commission that is strong and ours really doesn't have a lot of strength, strength to begin with. Is so that it can preserve all of the historic buildings in Plainfield. Now, the buildings that are most at risk are the ones that are around the train station. Because that's becoming, you know, a transit, a place where, where they're going to build a lot of apartments for the commuter. You can build apartments for the commuter in that area. You can build it up and you don't have to destroy. Any of the um, old architecture. You can, you know, you can restore it. We have to have a vision of what we want. When I hear we don't have the money. It's against the law. A lot of times that's a lie that things are against the law. They're not against law. I mean, I think Mincello will tell you things are against the law. Maybe he believes they're against the law. But, you know, I, I, I don't. He misled me years ago when I was trying to save the blueprint collection from being sold. At the, at the public library and he told me there was nothing I could do about it. It was private property. That's what he said to me. And I always hear that. It's private property. There's nothing you can do about it. There was something I was able to do about it. I ended up injuring myself fighting that fight too. Because I had just recovered from the cure for hepatitis C, which damn near killed me. And I ended up injuring my back in the process because I was on the computer constantly. Trying to figure out how I was gonna save this blueprint collection because I'm a very ignorant person. I know nothing about politics. I know nothing about the law. And so I'm coming from zero and I'm trying to figure out how to, how to fix the problem, you know? And I happened to hit on the right, so the right people. And that was the state archives. And they said that it was illegal. To sell them. And they came in a day before the sale. And prevented those blueprints from being sold. I was, you know, it was just me and Nancy Piroir that worked on that because I couldn't get anyone interested in it. They were like, well, it's just, it's just gonna happen. Just the way it is, you know? This was the largest blueprint collection in the United States. The Plainfield has so many valuable things in it. Um, we need to preserve them, not sell them. We need to get the Tiffany windows back and we need to preserve that church. Any which way we can, you know? Now, I feel for the people who are on council. I think you're all overworked, to tell you the truth. I look at those, I look at the uh, agenda. I'm like, I couldn't handle that if I was operating on all ten cylinders. You know? I'm really stupid now. I've lost a lot of my intelligence because of my diseases that I've had, you know? I don't know how I function day to day. You know, so I, I just, I, I think the structure of the city council meeting needs to be changed where there's more of an interaction where. You know, one side says one thing, the other side says the other thing, and then there's a rebuttal. And then you vote. I feel like you guys are not fully informed and there's no way for you to be fully informed. You're overworked. Every last one of you are overworked. Uh, anyway, I love all of you, even you Valerie. Who I'm fighting tooth and nail. I am fighting Valerie tooth and fucking nail. Because I want this church to be preserved and I want those Tiffany windows returned. And I want every valuable historic property in that transit area to be preserved. I don't want it sold off to the highest bidder, you know? I just don't want that happening. Money means nothing to me. I am poverty stricken. I've been poverty stricken my whole life. I lived for six years with no money and I traveled around the world with no money. And I just let the winds blow me, you know? I don't care about money and I wish all of you guys didn't care about money. I wish all of you cared, had a vision of what you wanted. I don't wanna see gentrification happen in Plainfield. I want, I, I wanna see it made beautiful, but I don't wanna see anyone lose their housing. So I want rent control. Put in place in Plainfield so that no one ever loses their housing in Plainfield. I don't wanna see the poor moved out, you know? I am the poor and I've been the poor my whole life. But even if I were rich, I wouldn't wanna see the poor moved out. And I could go on and on and on, but I don't wanna bore you and you guys need to go home and go to sleep. All right? Bye-bye.
Thank you, Ms. Ferroni. Have a good night.
Uh, Count, Council President, we've exceeded the action twenty minutes for the motion.
Motion to close public comment.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Uh.
Any opposed? Any abstaining?
Opposed.
Let's get a vote. Mr. Clerk. I believe someone opposed. Can I have a vote, please, Mr. Clerk?
Yes, give me a second, please.
Let me just say, I apologize to all of those that were holding, um, that we didn't get a chance to uh, get to your comments.
That can be remedied.
Thank you, Councilman McKenna.
Robo-call on, robocall on the, on the, the. Motion to adjourn, I'm sorry, to close public comments. Councilmember Briggs Jones?
No.
Davis?
No.
Hockaday?
Yes.
McKenna?
No.
Is ransom?
No.
Cray?
Yes.
Council President Good.
No.
So the motion to close public comment is set.
And who's next? We will take.
Council President, if I may, we are, we are now in uncharted waters, um, in, in council history. Are you going to set a time limit for, for uh, council for public comment? Or are we just gonna continue?
Uh, Mr. Mincello, we will go ten minutes.
Okay.
Ten minutes, uh.
So that's time, that's.
Mister, Mister Clerk.
That's two callers.
Two speakers, that's two speakers.
Okay.
Council President, you, you have the right as the presiding officer of this meeting to set the time for public comment.
I, I'm, I'm aware of that and we will go ten minutes more.
Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Clerk, uh, please.
I, I, I'm, I'm at a, first of all. I'm, I'm at a loss here of why Corporation Council is even chiming in. It, it, we're in uncharted territory because we've never.
Because that's what he does, Councilman McKenna. And I said.
Jumping in, he's jumping in, nobody asked him a question. Do you have?
He doesn't have to. He's, he's, he's suggesting. And I said ten minutes. And so that's what we're gonna do.
So two speakers.
We have people waiting. Uh, I, I don't see any reason why we can't do a few, a couple of more calls and we will do that. Thank you. Uh, Ray Costello. Thank you for holding, um, and for your patience. Your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, yes, uh, it's Ray Costello and I live at two fifteen East Ninth Street. And I am a strong believer in historic preservation. Uh, my wife and I moved to Plainfield because we liked the history. And I am disappointed that. Tonight's meeting, the vote came up very quickly in terms of. Taking away some of the power of the Historic Preservation Commission to comment and have checks and balances. On development plans. So. I am at a loss to think that this could be put forward that fast. And not have a public discussion around it. Uh, it sounds to me as if you are slowly whittling away the power of the HPC and I. Have to say that I like a strong HPC and I think they should be a checks imbalance on this. Uh, on the city itself as well. So. I uh, intend to remember that when I vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Costello. We will do Nancy P. War and Charisse Koots. And then that will be our last call for the evening. Ms. P. War, your name and address again for the record, please.
Nancy P. War, eleven twenty-nine Myrtle Avenue. Um, wa- a lifer in Plainfield. First of all, I appreciate all the conversations and your time tonight. And I only brought up the certified local government issue because I am concerned. About possible funding and the oversight that the shippo and the uh, United States Department of Interior takes. On certified local governments. I do not want it to impact the city in any way. Because everybody knows my heart is the city. And I don't want it to impact any grant funding whatsoever. And there is a, a caveat even in the guidelines from the state, um, guidelines. About, they mentioned CB, uh, CBBG monies and also UDAG projects. So I'm really. I, I just want the city to be cautious with what they're doing. And I know that they talk, uh, people talked about, the attorney talked about inconsistencies. With the municipal land use law and the, and the city code and HPC. Well, if the ship, state shippo office has um, a review. Of certified local governments, I would have thought at some pa- time in the past forty years or so, since nineteen eighty-six. That if there was an issue, they would have um, talked to you about it. Maybe they haven't. I've just don't know about that. Um. That was the reason why I brought it up. I, I just want to make sure that the city's safe. Um, for any of their future historic preservation projects. Just like if you're doing the Y, you might be able to be eligible, but I don't want one thing. To track or there's ramifications against it. And I just wanna, I don't live in a historic district. Um, but I just wanna say to the people that they're still on who do live in a historic district. It is amazing what private money has done for this town. Everybody talks about redevelopers and they're coming in and whatever. It was private money in these historic districts. That was the thread that held this city together after what everybody calls the rebellion to Renaissance. It was private citizens that held the city together. Private money. Blue collar workers, um, New York workers, whoever they were. It was private money. They didn't have tax credits for historic preservation. They came in, some of these houses were um, multifamilies. I remember the Tepper House on, on Seventh Street. Where a family took that house from a multifamily and made it into what it was originally. So. Um, I, I just, if any of the people are on that live in a historic district, I want, I. As a citizen that's lived here all my life, I wanna thank you for your investment in this city. And, and the city, I just wanna make sure. That whatever actions you do, do not impact the future of the city. For the ability to get grants. And if you've already reviewed it with the historic um, shippo office, then great. If not, I just hope what happened at Hannah Acton Park with the DEP doesn't help in with historic preservation. Um, you know, in the city. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. P. War. Motion to close public comment. Motion to close public comment. Can I have a motion to close public comment?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Sorry, I did, was there a first? I didn't, my.
Uh, Councilman Hockaday.
Okay.
There wasn't a motion. I said there is no motion.
So we keep going.
Oh, point of order before we continue. Uh, do we necessarily need members of the administration for this portion? Uh, because a number of them are still at City Hall and I do wanna take that into account as we listen to public comments. I mean, the council is home, right? This is a council meeting. These public comments are to the council. Is it possible and is it okay for us to dismiss members of the administration while the council continues to listen to these public comments? Is that possible, Mr. Mincello?
Uh, Councilwoman Davis, thank you for that, that wonderful question. Uh, the administration only appears at the, at be- because they are directed to by the administration. They actually. None of the members of the administration are required to be here by our code. They actually come to be of service to the council. So at any time, they are, they are free. The only individuals who are required to be here for the meeting are the clerk. And uh, myself as Corporation Council. So all members of the administration are not required to be here and can be relieved, uh, you know, can be allowed to leave, uh, if. Either the mayor or the business administrator, uh, allows them to leave.
Okay, that being said, uh, again, is there a motion on the floor to close public comment? And is there a second? So.
There's clearly no motion.
Okay, uh, clearly, I'm asking a question. Thank you, Councilwoman Davis.
Well, the.
Mr. Mincello.
Yeah.
Um, uh, with the discretion of you and, and BA Levinson, uh, you may do what you feel.
That's purely, that's not my call. That's, that's purely Abby's call. Yeah.
I think it'd be fair for those who are at City Hall and, and at the police station to, to head home. It's, it's late and I, I would hate to see them. Um, go home any later than this. And, you know, I, I'm gonna stay on.
Ca- Council President, just a question and it's just a, just an inquiry.
Go right ahead.
Our council rules require an hour for public comment. Um, we have obviously extended that by motion appropriately. Uh, we've done it. We are now at a position now where you've, where that, that time period has elapsed. But there has been no motion to extend. This is a first. And I, I said, I, I know I referred it as uncharted waters. We've never had a situation where, um. I, I'm just, I, I would, I, I think we should proceed under a mo- my recommendation is we proceed under some form of motion.
With all due respect, uh, Mr. Mincello.
Excuse me, excuse me, Mr. Motion.
And I'm, I'm speaking to the Council President.
Excuse me.
The last, the last.
Okay, may I speak, Councilwoman, I'll wait till, I'll wait till Councilman McKenna's done.
Excuse, excuse, excuse me, Councilman McKenna. So what I would do, what I was, was there a motion to extend?
I'm trying to clarify that Corporation Council is incorrect. We did not extend the last.
Okay, and I am making a motion to extend at this point, at this time, at this, the second. Is there a motion to extend? Is there a motion to extend?
I'm, we extend public comment.
Okay, is there a second?
I wasn't done with my motion. I move that we extend public comment for the current eleven people who have their hands up right now.
Okay. And of course, that would be down to CB. Mr. Clerk.
I, uh, did hear a second on that.
Second.
There is a second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any oppose? Any abstaining? That motion carries. We will go down to CB, which is the last one that I see with their hand up. So we will continue to take, uh, the comments. Is at that point, uh, CB, we will close public comment. Mr. Marsh, good evening. Thank you for holding.
Yep.
Your name and address for the record, please.
Ed Marsh, one thirteen Wykoff Avenue, Piscataway. Um. I've lived in central Jersey for sixty-five years. I grew up in Piscato in the Arbor section in the early part of my life. I attended the uh, Plainfield YMCA and shopped at Teppers and other stores. It, it holds many memories for me. Um, I think I appreciate and, and thank uh, council members Davis and McKenna. For speaking up for the people and for the Historic Preservation Commission. Um, I love Plainfield's history and its historic districts and old buildings. Landmarks. Um, it's, you know, one of the city's amenities and uh. Part of the charm and the character, since the essential character of the city. Um, the city needs revitalization, not redevelopment. Excuse me, and tear downs and eminent domain abuse. Um. I'm disappointed with those of you who voted uh, to railroad this through without adequate time for the public to prepare arguments against it. I have many friends, you know, who own homes in Plainfield. I've gone on many tours. I just like the his- the, the history of the town. It really is. Uh, something that should be preserved in Plainfield. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Marsh. We appreciate your comments.
You're welcome.
Yes, uh, Arn Acre.
You got it. This is Arna. Arna Akry, nine fifteen Madison Avenue.
Thank you.
I've been in, uh, Plainfield for seventy-two years and I'm still going strong. I love the town. I love the architecture, but more than the architecture, I love the people. And um I love that they came out tonight to talk about what they care about. And I I love you council members too for volunteering, and I know you get paid something. But boy, you you work hard and you've worked long hours and you have a heavy burden on you to decide things. But I I hope you listen to the people when they come out and when they do have opinions about how they'd like to see the 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 city developed and the density and the traffic and so on. And that we just don't do development for development, and that's it. And to try to do it so expediently for outside developers, you know, with the money and ones that are getting tax abatements. And who knows what else they're doing with their money uh for political reasons to get projects expediated. We we need to listen to the people, and I love the comment made by uh Nancy that P O R that uh all the people that have worked hard, including myself, to take care of their homes and invest in their properties and comply with the HPC. Many times, you know, we put on a new roof and we complied with them. We put some fencing up to keep deer out and we complied with the HPC. We had an accident and our front um uh was a vehicle that crashed into our front steps. And we rebuilt and we complied with the HPC. We believe in the HPC and we support it, and I hope you do, and I hope you don't whittle away at the the care that they have for the process. And there should be, as many people have said, extra checks and balances uh for looking at th- things in a, in many different perspectives, like the the planners and the zoning people are gonna look at it from strictly on on a, on a code basis on what are variances are needed and whether it's gonna benefit the public. But, you know, the HPC does care about how projects fit within a neighborhood and how the neighborhood looks and how it keeps that uh the the solidity of the neighborhood. And I I hope you feel that just the way I feel it, and I hope you'll reconsider some of the votes when it goes before a second vote on on some of these issues. Thank you for your service, all of you, and I hope you think about it harder. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night. Francine Gargano, good evening. Your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening. Francine Gargano, fifty-seven Willow Avenue in North Plainfield. I am an attorney. I live in a Victorian home in North Plainfield. I have sat on the Historic Preservation Commission in my town. I am a council candidate. I am a trustee for the Heritage Trail Association. We're in a historic Van Horn House by the Patriot. I am a strong believer in history. I know Nancy, I know Michael. I'm sure there's other people on here who I know. I uh was born at Milenburg Hospital. Very familiar with Plainfield, involved in their, in their politics, good friends with Helen Miller. Ms. Davis, you remind me of former councilwoman who passed away, Helen Miller. And I appreciate you and Mr. McKenna being the only two having some guts to stand up for what's right. I've been so upset going in and out of Plainfield. I couldn't believe what I was seeing. But after what I heard tonight, I am really shocked. And I tried to look up where Mayor Matt was born, but clearly he was not born in Plainfield or in this area. I lived in Plainfield. I was on the board of the YWCA. You are chasing out the YMCA. You've chased out the YWCA. You've chased out churches. You are attacking the Salvation Army. I hope they're still on here. The best thing they could do was hire an attorney. I can't believe how they were threatened publicly. I'm I'm shocked. I'm shocked. I'm disgusted. I'm amazed. I personally would investigate what's going on at the YMCA and who actually owns that building and why all of a sudden it's costing so much money. It reminds me of uh Mayor Mark Peary. I remember there was an FBI investigation into him. And I'm thinking that there's gonna be several lawsuits. You cannot just alter and try to take away the power of your Historic Preservation Commission because they're not doing your bidding. You cannot destroy the city of Plainfield. It is highly suspicious, highly suspicious what you're doing. These housing projects are not necessary. There is no justification for it. It is adversely impacting my town of North Plainfield. We have traffic problems that we've never had. We are just a little town. All of a sudden, I cannot get across town. It takes me ten minutes what would take me three minutes before. Somerset Street, Watchong Avenue, Mountain Avenue, Greenbrook Road are all being impacted by what you and other surrounding communities are doing. And if I were sitting on the council or if I had won as mayor, one of the things I was gonna deal with is the traffic that you are pushing into our town. So when you are doing things, you have to consider other people as well. Now, I know Nancy P O R and Bill Michelson and other people, you have a very strong historic um group there. And I'm certainly hoping that they will take you all to task. I can tell you, when I was involved in politics in Plainfield, we would come down in person, and I guarantee you would not do any of the things you were doing. Because when we came down in person, we weren't very nice. You had hundreds of people that would go to the point where they would try to shut the door on us. So the people on this have been extremely nice. I don't know why. They've been extremely nice. They've sat back and watched all of you, apparently, because I thought it was just Mayor Matt. But apparently, all of you sit here and destroy one part of town and another. I bought my first car, my Volkswagen on South Avenue. It it's horrible right now, South Avenue, and that was looking so nice. And every time I go there, another historic home has been torn down. Do you care about Plainfield? I mean, why are you sitting on the council? You should not be in politics if you are not there for the people. And you know what, Ms. Davis? I'm glad that you understood that the Salvation Army is one of your constituents. Forty years, I think they said they've been there. When I was a child, they were there. So they are your constituents. I don't care what the attorney says. You are representing your constituents. They've paid taxes. They've supported Plainfield. And then to be, somebody come along and say you're under utilizing your um parking lot, so we're gonna take it away from you, and you will give it to us for the price we wanna pay you? Don't you see? There's a problem. Churches, Christian organizations, the Park Hotel, not the nicest place in the world, but it has a history. Why would you do this to your town? I'm asking the people of Plainfield who are on here, which we can't see, which is another really weird thing, um, to step up, to get together, to maybe make some phone calls to some outside places and have them come in and investigate what's really going on in Plainfield, because this is not being done for the benefit of the people. And I was hoping that some of my North Plainfield representatives would be on here to speak against this because of the adverse impact to our town. So um again, I hope um the HPC and I hope the Salvation Army, they hire attorneys. We've, we've taken our town to court for trying to do things with our historic preservation. We don't find it acceptable, and it's clear that you didn't like what they did with the Grace Church. And it's very sad that any one of you, I I don't know what religion you are, but whatever religion you are, you should respect the church, the synagogue, the mosque, and not want to destroy some, especially one that's so historic. Thank you for listening. Thank you very much for extending your time, our time. Thank you. Have a great night.
Council President, I'd just like to reiterate to the members of the administration who are still at City Hall and the Police Department that they are welcome to go home um and and log off at this time. I'm not sure if it it was heard earlier, so I just wanted to reiterate that. Thank you.
Yeah, not IT.
Are you, are you calling me?
Uh, Abby, Abby, uh, will IT still be on? Okay, so we have the clerk and we have IT. Okay.
And you have me and you have Corporation Counsel.
Okay, thank you so much. Okay, uh, Ms. Logan Leach, good evening. How are you?
Good evening. Everyone can hear me?
Yes, ca- can I have your name and address for the record?
Lisa Logan Leach, First Ward uh resident. Um, first, I'd like to say thank you very much for the motion to extend. It might be an unusual or uncharted territory, but um many governing bodies will go and look to see how many individuals are before you, either in person or on a Zoom platform and then would extend by that amount of people, just what other governing um elected officials do, just as a point of information. Um, the points that I want to speak on, and I don't know if I will get a very straightforward yes or no answer, but I will try. Um, first question I have is dealing uh with the HPC ordinance. Um, true or false? Yes or no? Will historic buildings like Grace Episcopal Church be torn down for purposes such as some kind of redevelopment like apartments? I've heard um people on this call indicate that they are supposed to be tearing down Grace Episcopal Church to make way for um a hundred and seventy-five apartments. Um, so that's the very first thing, crystal clear, either it's true or it's false. Second point, um, if we follow this line of thinking, are we setting up um other historic buildings to be torn down as well, such as the Drake House? What's to stop that from being torn down as well for the sake of doing redevelopment? Another point, I don't know if members of the council and administration are aware, but currently buried at Grace Episcopal Church are ashes of members who um were members long time of Grace Episcopal Church. Those ashes are slated to be removed from Grace Episcopal Church and then be brought over to Saint Mark's Episcopal Church to be buried in our memorial garden. I know this because the bishop spoke at a joint meeting because I am a member of Saint Mark's Episcopal Church, which is down on Park Avenue in Plainfield. So I don't know if you all are aware of that, but ashes, that means people who have passed on are slated to be moved over. If they're slated to be moved over, that lets me think this building is going to go bye-bye. Because why else would we go and move ashes? Next point. There are many, many apartments. As I ride through Plainfield up and down, you see apartments, apartments, apartments. It seems like any uh um small piece of grass, there's an apartment that's going to go on that area. Has anyone given any thought to how this is impacting and will impact the current school system that's in town? Obviously, not every single person is going to go to our school district. Some will go to private schools, some might go to a charter school, some might go and do homeschooling, whatever the case might be. However, this will have impact on our schools, impact on our busing. It has an impact. Another point, once upon a time, not so long ago, there used to be restaurants on South Avenue. And I don't mean fast food restaurants. We used to have two restaurants that you also had space within those two restaurants for private functions. Many of you attended functions, the Rotary Club, the Lions Club, various different political functions at those two restaurants. Those two went bye-bye to make way for the Wawa. We currently have no sit-down restaurant in town at this point that has space for private function. People have to leave our town when they are looking for a restaurant. They have to leave our town when they are looking for movie theater. They have to leave our town when they wanna go roller skating. They have to leave our town when they want to do just about anything. If we keep building and building and building apartments, 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 there should be something that is a draw for them to come to the town. Otherwise, they're just coming here to rest their head, take their shower, and then take their business and their money elsewhere. This is something that needs to be looked at. Currently on Route twenty-two, there is a restaurant that's being built. I believe it's called the Miller Ale House. It is a um a restaurant right by the Chick-fil-A. Um, Terrell Road and Route twenty-two. Something like that could have come into the town. Other towns that are on the South Avenue corridor, if they are building apartments, they have viable retail space underneath. Across from the Netherwood Train Station, you have apartments that were there.
Council President, the speaker's, the speaker's time is up.
Can I just, my last sentence?
Your last sentence, Ms. Logan Leach. We appreciate that.
Apartments that, thank you so much. Those apartments have retail space underneath that has yet to be um taken advantage of. Thank you for the time and hopefully all listened.
Thank you. Have a good night. Okay, Lore, your name and address for the record, please, and good evening.
Good evening. My name is Krista Lawrenson, and I live at three oh eight West Eighth. Thank you for extending the time tonight. I wanted to address your votes tonight on the HPC. One of the reasons that my husband and I felt comfortable with buying a home in the Van Wick Brooks Historic District is because Plainfield had, as of tonight, a strong Historic Preservation Commission. We didn't like the inappropriate development that had already been allowed to take place in Plainfield before the HPC was formed. But at least we thought our future neighborhood would be protected from further damage. We loved the vibrancy and diversity in Plainfield and saw its amazing potential. Plainfield is much further out of New York City than we were comfortable commuting from. The one and only reason we were willing to make this commute was for the beautiful historic homes and neighborhoods. That's it. There are a hundred towns closer to Manhattan that have better schools, cleaner and safer downtowns, grocery stores, restaurants, et cetera. Plainfield's biggest drawn asset is its historical buildings. The current administration should be focused on protecting these assets, not destroying them. Every time our friends have visited us here in Plainfield, they see the potential too. They immediately get on Zillow and start looking at houses, and up until now, I've enthusiastically encouraged that. But now that you've done away with HPC's power, I will no longer be encouraging them. They wanna live in a charming historic neighborhood, not a dense, noisy sea of apartments. An apartment wasteland is not a Renaissance. It's a plague on the city. You represent your constituents. Your voters told you how they feel about the HPC tonight, and you completely ignored them. Most of you didn't even ask a single question. What are you here for if not to represent your voters? It's absolutely shameful. We see right through Valerie Jackson's gaslighting. She's not fooling anyone about the true motivations behind me kneecapping the HPC. And I think this is a sad, sad night for Plainfield. All of you who voted yes will be remembered for this. This is your legacy in Plainfield. I wanna offer my sincerest thanks to Sean McKenna and Ashley Davis for representing their voters through their own votes tonight. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Ms. Coontz, good evening. Uh, your name and address for the record, please.
Uh, good evening. Sharice Coontz, one forty-one McKinley Place in Plainfield. Good evening, everyone. This has been quite a marathon of a meeting. See all of you, and and I know you all are still there, and I know you're tired, because I'm tired too. I've already fallen asleep twice, so I'm
I noticed you, I noticed we dropped you off, and then you came back. You dropped off and you came back. Yeah.
I'm trying to stay awake, so I I feel for you guys having to sit here in this meeting, but um I I see, you know, what, I I have a couple of things that I want to um unpack here because I
Go right ahead, go right ahead.
Taking my notes. The my, the first thing is, um, first, uh, Councilman Good, I would like to thank you. I know I talked with you um at previous meetings about the parking lot at Pete's Fish Market. You know, talk about um, you know, supporting a local business. You know, that's one of the businesses that I that I do support. And the parking lot is now fixed. I'm not sure who's responsible for that, um, but I wanna thank you for getting that done. Um, but I want to thank you for getting that done, um, or whomever was responsible for getting that done, for getting that done, because I really do appreciate that. Also, every year about the time of daylight savings time, I come to the council meeting and I talk about the lighting in the city. This is, this is something I talk about every year. And I, I just, I thought it was very um, timely in the discussion about, it was an ordinance and I want to say it's ordinance uh, two fifty-seven dash twenty-two. And it's the, the ordinance about the, the LED lights. And I know that uh, Councilman, uh, Councilwoman Davis asked about the placement of those lights and why South Avenue was chosen. Um, I, I, I don't know that she ever got an answer. I didn't hear an answer, but I would really be interested in understanding uh, why uh, South Avenue was chosen, because I can tell you that there are other uh, dark areas of the city um, that could uh, use those LED lights. You know, the lighting is the city is something that I've been talking about uh, for many years. And, you know, I would really implore you guys to really look at the placement and the motivation of putting those lights on South Avenue, because I, I, I think it's very, it seems very suspicious to me about the placement of those lights. Uh, also, you know, I, I have heard all of the comments from the individuals speaking on the HPC ordinance. Uh, and uh, the individuals are very passionate about that. And I, I honestly didn't have anything to add to that conversation. But what I will say is, um, in listening to those conversations or, or the comments, it feels as if there is a bit of suspicion about motivations, about why things are happening. And I would definitely say that, um, I would hope that you guys are listening to that. And I know folks from the administration, you know, have dropped off of the call. But, you know, what I'm seeing in the comments, and it's been a recurring um, theme in many of the comments that I've heard on the meetings uh, previously, is that there seems to be a lot of suspicion about motivations, about why things are happening in the city. Um, why decisions are being made and uh, the lack of questions that appear to have to come from uh, many of the counselors. Now, maybe it's that the, the questions are being answered um, outside of the meetings. But, you know, I would just say for transparency's sake, you know, I would definitely um, suggest to the administration that they are forthright and transparent in what their motivations are, because it, it just seems that some of the things are, that are coming forward. They, they don't sit well. It seems like, it seems very suspicious.
And, and, and Ms. Coontz, uh, as we wrap this up, um, I, I, I will have to say a lot of questions are asked behind um, the scenes where we, where we go in-depth with asking questions.
Okay.
Um, especially prior to um, uh, putting an agenda together. So questions are asked over and over, over again.
Okay.
Prior to that. But, but, but like you said, for transparency and for the public, I will agree with you on that.
Yeah, well.
Council President, do you want to answer her other questions since you chose that one to answer?
Uh, 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 Councilman McKenna.
The lights on the South Avenue, maybe?
Councilman McKenna?
Oh, you just wanted to answer that one?
Yeah, yes.
Yeah, I just, and, and I appreciate, uh, that I appreciate you providing that feedback. Because it, it just seems that there are, you know, no questions being asked and um, just for transparency's sake, because I, I, I think folks are suspicious. You know, I keep hearing over and over, thanks Councilwoman McKenna, thanks Councilwoman Davis for asking the questions. And it seems that no one else is asking questions or making comments. And if these things are happening behind the scenes, people need to know that this is happening, because it, it seems like, you know, things are just being gaslighted and things are just happening without there being any questions or comments. So that is, that is what I would like to say. Uh, but thank you guys for your time tonight. I know you got hired as well, so you guys have, have a great evening.
Thank you, Ms. Coontz. Have a good night. Maria Pellum, good evening. Your name and address for the record, please.
Thank you. Uh, Maria Pellum, eight twenty-nine Park Avenue, Plainfield, the Crescent Historic District. Thanks for, uh, for opening the discussion for such a long time. Limiting the speaker's time, my help in the future. I remember a long time ago when we used to go, when I used to go to council meetings, we used to have a limit of three minutes, sometimes less. I didn't come to make a comment on any of these objects here. I'm here to make a request, actually. I'm the person that takes care of the peninsula. Um, that is on Park Avenue and East Nine, corner of Prospect. I, I don't know if you're aware that that's a five-point corner where we have a peninsula built about ten years ago, and it was to the neighbors of the Crescent Historic District. Then we got to have a little bit of influence about what's, what was going to happen in that development of the corner. And I ended up taking care of the planting. Last year, the, the water company came and they did some projects. And they canceled my water connection. I have no water. I normally don't water that much, because I have plants that are native to the area. They don't need much water, but I do need the water now and then, and it's been very hard. Every single seed that I planted is, is dead by now, because I cannot carry water from my house to the peninsula. So I wanted to find out who can help me to get the water company to open the water access. Because I believe they closed it uh, for lack of communication with the city. And uh, that's what, you know, that's an entrance to the, uh, it's not only an entrance to the Historic District, but it's an entrance to Plainfield, people that are coming from the south or from the west or east through Park Avenue or East Nineth Street, West Nineth, uh, West Nine. That's, you know, that's a corner that they're going to pass. We are also the corner that goes to the high school, to the library, to the Evergreen School. But I'm not sure about any other places that they go to. But it's that, you know, we have a very busy corner and we like to keep it nice and clean. I volunteer my time, my money, my efforts to this, uh, to, to this corner. And I really need to have uh, somebody that, that is going to help me get the water back into that, into that corner.
Okay, thank you so much. Uh, Jerry Haidt?
Yes, hi.
Good evening, good evening. Your name and address for the record?
Nine fifteen Madison Avenue, Plainfield. I'm in the Van Wyk Brooks Historic District, and I've lived here for forty-seven years.
Good evening.
Um, thank you for extending the time. I wanted to tell you some, about something that happened when the uh, Historic Preservation Commission was, wasn't created too many years prior to this. There was a very large property on West Eighth Street with a home that I believe burned down. It was the Tyler Home. And this was under the purview of the HPC. And they very sensitively would allow only condominium developments, because at the time, this condominiums were very popular. That as a whole replicated the look of a single-family house. There's a huge front yard to this property still. And I believe it, it could be the one with the azalea hedge in front of it. That was quite famous for a while. Anyway, because of the HPC, and because this was a developer that was doing something that was different from what had been there before. He needed a variance, so he had to go before the zoning board. But because he went before the HPC, there's now this rather beautiful piece of property that's still intact with condominiums on it that do appear to be a one-family home. If that were to happen today, under the new rules that you have allowed to happen, that would be a huge apartment block. Because there is nothing to stop that from happening to a large piece of property, which we have many of in Van Wyk Brooks Historic District. If a building should burn down or something other devastating thing happened to it. And this would be now subject to any developer who wanted to come in and build as much as they want. Because the HPC no longer has the ability to give them a certificate of appropriateness. This property is right across the street from the mayor's house. And the mayor, if he lived there, would be looking at a vast apartment complex. And that's what you've done tonight. Ashley Davis and Sean McKenna, thank you for your questions. I don't know why this could not have been extended to another meeting. There seems to be a big rush to get this through, which tells me that something is eminently going to come up. Again, thank you for extending the time. I appreciate it. And I just wanted to mention, Mr. Good, you're a very polite host. I appreciate that, because I've been at other meetings where the public has not been treated well. And I do appreciate that you treat the public well.
Thank you, Ms. Haidt. We appreciate you, your com, your comments and you being patient, holding on this evening. CB, you are our last call, our, our last comment. Uh, your name and address for the record, please?
It's Cheryl Bullock, ten sixty Central Avenue.
Ms. Bullock, good evening. Thank, or should I say good morning?
Yes, that's okay. So back.
Council President, she spoke already.
But I spoke on a different project, not open meeting. But I'd like to just continue real quick. You, we used to have two meetings, um, a month for council people. Um, and I think it used to work better that way. We did have some meetings where people actually stood outside. You used to have a big audience and you used to have better participation. So I have to blame, you know, some of the, the residents of Plainfield for not participating more and taking advantage of the opportunity.
Thank you. Thank you so much for the input. I appreciate that.
Yes, but I would wish that when something is up on the agenda, that you guys would be more forefront with, that you really do care about what we think, because the majority of the citizens in Plainfield think that you've got your mind made up and that you really don't care what we think.
And that is not true. That's not true.
But I'm just telling you.
Okay.
I'm just stating what people tell me and how it looks on the camera, again, because we're not there in person. The other, the other thing is, the state of New Jersey has rules for rent, for rent increases. There's no, um, there's no law about how much a landlord can raise the rent. And in all fairness, when I was a landlord, when my rent went up, I mean, when my insurance went up and my taxes went up, I did increase tenants' rent at like twenty or twenty-five dollars at a time. Now you have over five hundred units that the landlords have increased the tenant's rent anywhere from a hundred and fifty to four hundred dollars.
Okay.
And not just because they're trying to get rid of them, but the excuse is South Avenue and the west end of Plainfield have new apartments and they're getting sixteen hundred and two thousand dollars a month for a one-bedroom. I think I can too. Even though they haven't renovated the buildings and they haven't renovated the tenants, that's the excuse. So somebody's paying twelve hundred dollars a month, now they're required to pay fifteen hundred dollars a month. So the law says you have to do a reasonable amount, and a reasonable about my law is usually considered ten percent. So I would like the council to address this for the future, because there's going to be an in, big, big, big influx of um, people looking for rental assistance. There're going to be a lot of evictions. There's going to be some homelessness. And because you got rid of the YW and YMCA, Plainfield doesn't have a place for homeless people to go to right now. And half the time, they don't have transportation for the police department to even ship them to Elizabeth or Newark. Um, so there, there are several people sleeping downtown at the train stations right now, and even on some of the park benches downtown. Um, and I think it's going to get worse. And I think that we're going to need some more rental assistance and some more help um, for local residents, and it's going to be coming down pretty soon, according to my information on some of the recent surveys I've completed. Also, um, the food bank people, I wish they would go on Face, Plainfield Facebook and talk about where people can go for food assistance. The food bank that I used to help with, um, has not been receiving any food lately. So that's something that I would like to see addressed on your Facebook webpage. Also, there's a chicken ordinance. There's more people with chickens still running around town. And some people don't believe that there's an ordinance about it, said they couldn't find it. Or they've called City Hall and people allegedly told them they could have chickens, they just couldn't have roosters. Um, so I'd like to see that addressed. I'd also like to see the fence ordinance. I was told that Plainfield will no longer allow chain-linked fence up. And there are people putting chain-linked fences up. And again, they're between um, Valerie's apartment. There has been some miscommunication with residents and they're putting up chain-lit fence instead of the other proper type of fence. Like if they had a wooden fence, they're supposed to put a wooden fence back. So um, I'd like to see some more information put on Facebook, for example, about this HPC.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
A may, a way for people to get the information, not just on the Plainfield website. People don't always look at that, but they do look at the Plainfield Facebook or Twitter. I think now some of the younger people do.
Right.
To, to get some information out there about that.
We appreciate your comments. Thank you so, so much.
Thank you.
Have a good night. A motion to close public comment. Is there a motion to close public comment?
So moved.
So second. I will second. Public comment is now closed. All in favor? Say aye, oppose? Any abstaining? Can somebody say something, please? I know it's, I know it's late. Okay, all right. Okay, so uh, public comment is officially closed.
You had a vote? I was the only one that said no. I didn't hear a yes. I didn't hear anything.
Maybe you're not listening.
Okay, what was the vote? What was the total? Yays and nays?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any abstaining? Any? Oppose?
No.
Okay, fine. I am officially closing public comment. Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, any opposed, any abstaining? Motion granted. Everyone, thank you for your patience and your time to tonight. Have a good evening. Be safe.